Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, July 20th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us for members of the public unable to attend council meetings. We can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Hahn, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, 11 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The Council is officially in session. Mr. Parks, did you have a presentation this morning? We recognize Councilmember Parks for a presentation.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, July 20th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Mr. Parks, did you have a presentation this morning? We recognize Councilmember Parks for a presentation.
Thank you. Mr. President, we have a very special person here today, somebody that I worked with for a number of years. Laura, where are you? Come on up here.
Right here.
All right. Laura Johnson is a person that gave 35 years of her life to the city of L.A. But let me just give you a little breakdown of her career and you'll see what arise that she's had through the city of Los Angeles' civil service system. She started her career as a basic-level clerk typist in 1969. She became a senior clerk typist in '71. She decided to go outside the city for about 25 months while she received her bachelor's degree at Cal State University. Upon receiving that degree, she returned to city service in 1980 as a junior administrative assistant with Department of Water and Power. She then promoted to management assistant. She then transferred back to the Los Angeles Police Department as employee relations. And in September '94 was promoted to senior management analyst II. And in January 1997 to chief management assistant. She became the commanding officer of RNI and I think that's when her and I first worked closely together. At that time, we counted backlog by feet and inches as opposed to a number of reports. And she went into RNI after replacing a longtime commanding officer and completely revitalized the division as relates to addressing some of the most important issues in the department. Many people aren't aware that RNI, although it's not given that kind of a claim on a daily basis, is really the heart and soul of the police department. Without RNI, the department could not function because it keeps the records, it keeps the files, it's a place where we go to to address almost all of our historical perspective as relates to issues that we need. She then continued her progress and promotion as a police administrator II, which is a fairly new position at that time, became the assistant commanding officer of Information and Communication Services Bureau. And in 2001, and that's in 2001 also, she became the commanding officer of Support Services Group in June of 2002. She subsequently promoted to police administrator III, which is the highest rank of civilian employee within the LAPD. And she became the commanding officer of Fiscal and Technical Services Bureau. Currently, it's been changed to Administrative and Technical Services Bureau. During her lengthy career, she received many commendations, accolades, notably, she also won a high honor in the department as Department Management Award for Human Resources. And that was primarily, I believe, dealing with your RNI service. And so, she also was married to a former legislative analyst in the city in Matt Beal. We'll let you come up now. Okay? She's the mother of three children and the grandmother of two. And we wanted to honor her on her 35 years of service because having been a city employee for a little over 40 years, it's always good to know that we have long tenure, people that are willing to move around the city and develop their skills. And then also, when it's appropriate, they decide to leave and enjoy the retirement that they earn. And so, we have a twofer here, two city employees that retire and going to get the best advantage of what they've earned, which is retirement. And so, Laura, let me say thank you very much for all those things. I'm so pleased you got AFIS I-Cars done before you left. Because I used to sit in those committees and you'd explain to us why it was necessary and why you needed the money and all those other things in RNI where we now feel as though we're on the right road. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Very briefly, it's been a pleasure to serve for 35 years, the city service. My thanks to Councilwoman Parks who gave me my first commanding officer position and had a lot of trust and faith in me. And I wish you all the best and the challenges that you're going to meet in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask all of the LAPD personnel that are here to support you, would you stand up? Oh, I'm sorry. Chief, why don't you come up and make some comments? I didn't see you there. Chief Sharon Popper.
Thank you. And we're here today because while we honor Laura and we're very appreciative of her 35 years, we're also very sorry to see her go. And I think many of the council members who were here today have worked with Laura over the years and you know what a true professional she is. So, we wish her good luck as she goes off into retirement and hopefully she will remain a phone call away for when we need to call for some of that historical knowledge that she has. So, Laura, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Did you guys stand up? Please stand up. I mean, just a personal request. Thank you, LAPD personnel. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Congratulations, Councilman Parks. Thank you for honoring Laura. Councilman Parks, just wanted to add a little more luster in that beautiful tribute you gave to Laura and also thank her husband, who served this city well and now is an executive with Automobile Club of Southern California, which is trying to make Los Angeles move safely. But thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations on your promotion. I met two young police officers this morning in my neighborhood and I told them about how important the career with the city of Los Angeles is and how you never know where you'll end up if you work hard. And you're a testament to that success, Laura. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labange moves. Mr. Parks seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves. And Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, items one through six are items noticed for public hearings and the recommendation for council action would be to open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to August 10th.
Members, items one through six now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and without objection, continue to August 10th. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through 33. On item number 33, there are two reports on the file and I believe both can be adopted.
Okay. Colleagues, items seven through 33 now before us. These items have had public hearings in committee and a motion from the floor be required to reopen the public hearings. Ms. Perry for specials? Seven?
Yeah.
Call special by Ms. Perry. Mr. Weiss? Any other specials? Mr. Cardenas?
Thirty-three specials.
Thirty-three. Call special by Mr. Cardenas. Any other specials, colleagues? Item seven through 33. Seeing none on the balance of the items, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Madam Clerk, item 16 has an urgency clause.
Yes, since there are only 11, the urgency clause will not be operative.
Okay. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 34 through 69. 10 votes are required for consideration.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Items 34 through 69, public hearings are open and closed. Specials, Ms. Perry. Fifty-five. Call special by Ms. Perry. Any other specials? Mr. Cardenas?
On the previous item forthwith, 15, please.
Okay. Wait in just a second here. Any other specials on 34 through 69? Seeing none on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Items 34 through 39 are ordinances and carryover for second readings. Next items, please.
Next items are closed sessions, items 70 through 75. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold all closed session matters on the desk.
Next items on the continuation agenda, items 77 and 76 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members, items 76 and 77 now before us. Specials? Ms. Grohl?
Yes, actually, I wanted to receive and file item number 76 if we could because there's two different recommendations and either I can call it special to address it or if you give me 30 seconds, I can just tell you why now. Does that work?
To receive and file?
Yes.
That's all we need, is a motion to receive and file, item 76?
Okay.
Any objection? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 76, to receive and file, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Item 77. Call special. Mr. Rosendale?
Mr. President, I'd like us to reconsider item 17. I'd like to ask a question of the department and make that special.
Okay, let's open the roll on reconsideration of item 17. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that's called special by Mr. Rosendale. Item 77, call special by Mr. Cardenas. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
That would take back, council back to the items called special and also public comment on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, well, let's first send item 15 forthwith and now turn to general public comment for today's meeting, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. And there are a number of cards from the South Central Farmers. I'll read the names and I understand you have three spokespeople on behalf of the group. Vanessa Acosta, Lydia Velasquez Morales, Maria Gonzalez, Carlos Reyes, Elizabeth Vaquero, Alberto Tratoa, Maribel Tratoa, Manuel Cedillo, Antonia Reyes, Manuel Garay, Sergio Huajardo, Santiago Cantano, Maria y José Solano, Sidonio del Valle, Julian Ventura, Remedios Zapata, Felipe Guevara, Ricardo Torres, Rafael, Lucila Delgado, Teodoro Sanchez, Daniel Salgado, Luis Morales, Fidelina Salgado, Tomas Pedro, and Federico Vargas.
Good morning, City Council. Good morning, Ms. Perry. My name is Vanessa Acosta and I'm here with the South Central Farmers. Ms. Perry, I'm so sorry that you misunderstood our message last Friday, July 15. Today, the South Central Farmers would like to do a presentation and also would like to invite you to come to their garden this evening for a co-op meeting. Thank you. Do I need an interpreter for this or can... Okay, good. Thank you. There we go. Her name is...
Adelante, señor.
Okay.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre, mi nombre es Maria Gonzalez. Vengo a pedir una ayuda por el terreno que estamos trabajando. Que les doy muchas gracias a Dios y a toda la gente que nos está dando.
Good morning. My name is Maria Gonzalez and I came here to request about a favor about the lot, the land, the piece of land that we're working. I thank you and I thank all of you.
Okay. Que lo estamos trabajando y que yo voy todos los días así caminando a limpiar y a regar mi verdura que tengo allí y estoy muy agradecida.
And I also thank God and I go there, I walk every day and I go there to clean and to water and water my vegetables and I'm very thankful.
Okay. Y pedimos esa ayuda y pedimos ese apoyo que nos espero en que nos apoyen porque allí somos campesinos y somos trabajadores y tenemos bien limpio allí y yo quiero estar allí porque...
We're asking for your help and support because we are farmers and we're working there and we want to, we clean it.
Okay, les pido ese apoyo por todos y por todas mis nietos. Tengo 20 nietos y todos los ha llevado allí a pasearse, a ver todas las parcelas sembradas que están allí. Nos sentemos bien contentos, por eso venimos aquí.
I do have 20 children and I have taken them there to see the parcels, 20 grandchildren and I take them there to see the parcels and we're very happy there.
Okay, gracias. Eso es lo que yo pido, por favor, el apoyo.
So, thank you very much and that's what I am requesting for you, from you, your support.
Ms. Perry, Ms. Maria Gonzalez and some of the ladies would like to give you some of their vegetables and representing the garden. Okay. They're giving you corn, some spearmint, cilantro.
Alfalfa.
Alfalfa, alfalfa's good for you. You can make that into a shake, into a drink. You can take a portion of it and put it in a blender and you cut it up with pineapple and you mix it in a blender and then you, you can drink it and it's very good for you. And the granddaughter brings you some flowers and some nopales, which are good for you. You can share with other people. That's okay. Thank you.
Muchas gracias, hermano.
Can they leave it outside? Can they leave it in the front desk outside so they can share it with the rest? Is that okay? Can they leave it, you know, where we came in, the front desk, so they can... Thank you.
Yo soy Lidia Morales y represento allí de donde vino de jardines.
Good morning. My name is Lidia Morales and I'm there also represent... I'm also there from the gardens. I'm here with my husband. We are working on the corn fields and I like to work with the shovel and the hoe and I hope that you help us and support us and let us work there because we have children, we have parents, and we have family. We have a lot of family members and they love to come and see. We love, we like to be united and get along with everybody. And we grow chayote and the flowers, roses and chipilin. Thanks to all of you and we hope for your support.
Good morning, my, good morning, Councilman, Ms. Perry. My name is Elizabeth Vaquero. I'm daughter of one of the families that have a plot of 41 in Alameda. When I talked to my parents, they told me that we had the plot since I was one year old. We got, we got that beautiful garden. All that time has been wonderful days that I spent with my parents. I beg you not to close that beautiful garden.
Good morning, Councilman, Ms. Perry. My name is Carlos Esquerer. My favorite part of being in the garden is open. My mom grow plants. My favorite plant in her plot is the seposuchil. It's a, it's a seposuchil. It's a marigold in Nahua. Here are some from my mom's garden.
They're the marigolds that they use for the Day of the Dead and you can also eat these and sprinkle them on your salad.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Antonia Reyes.
Good morning. My name is Antonia Reyes.
Yo soy, este, vengo representando al jardín de Alameda. Necesitamos su ayuda, su apoyo de ustedes porque sin el apoyo de ustedes no podemos nosotros hacer nada.
And I'm representing the Alameda Garden and we need your help and your support because without your support, we are not able to do anything.
Yo soy una persona sola y allá siembro mis verduras para mi familia, para mis hijos y para mis nietos.
I'm a single person there and I grow there the vegetables for my family, for my children and for my grandchildren.
Sí, soy una persona que estoy enferma pero allá me siento muy a gusto y si nos llegaran a quitarnos, yo creo que moría de pena porque allá me siento super bien.
And we feel very happy there and working the land and if it's taken away from us, I would feel very sad, would die of sadness.
Bueno, ese es todo lo que les digo y muchas gracias. Necesitamos su ayuda, por favor, ayúdenos.
That's all what I have to say and thank you and we do need your help. Thank you.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Remedios Zapata y quiero hacerle una invitación a la señora Perris para que nos acompañe todos los miércoles a las juntas en ese embraío. Gracias.
Good morning. My name is Remedios Zapata and I wanted to invite Councilman Perry to come in to the meetings that we have in the, on Wednesdays at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. This concludes the general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number seven, call special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to say a few words about this item after several years of really hard work and consensus building with our community and the MTA and the County of Los Angeles. We have finally arrived at an exciting point for downtown Los Angeles. By removing the contra-flow designation on Spring Street, we will be balancing bus traffic and making bus stops more convenient for riders to use. As well by improving Spring Street, we'll be making the downtown area a safer, easier and more friendly and certainly easier to cross the street and encourage pedestrian activity. So, I just want to encourage all of you to vote affirmatively. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. That item is now...
That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. Next order...
And there is an ordinance and that will go over for one week.
Okay. That item then will be carried over for one week. Next item?
Next item is item number 17 and that was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Councilmember Rosendahl, item number 17.
I'd like the staff to come back on this issue, Madam President.
If we could have staff here on this item, please? This would be Department of Transportation. Do we have representatives from the Department of Transportation here? We'll hold that on the desk, Mr. Rosendahl, until we have staff present on that item. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next item is item number 33 called special by Councilmember Cardenas and there are two reports on the file.
Councilmember Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Madam President. One of the things that we have to do as local government is we have to decide what kind of activity is going to be allowed on certain land, on certain properties. And what we have in Sun Valley, for example, is a great deal of landfills, chrome plating plants, all kinds of facilities that are affecting our environment. Now, somebody five miles away or 50 miles away might not think much about that, but if you're down the block or around the corner from all of these multiple facilities, your health is being affected. One of the problems in the way that government normally looks at things, when somebody wants to say, do a certain activity on their land, we have a planning process, we have an approval process, and they say, "Just look at my piece of land and that's it. What my neighbors do is not my business. Just look at what my business is going to do." So, for the first time, the city of Los Angeles is engaging in an activity that looks at the entire community and then decides what kind of activity we should allow on that land based on how much emissions are going out, how they're affecting the soil, how their neighbors are affecting the soil, so that we can reduce this concentration of environmental impacts on the community. One of the things that's very important, there's a catchphrase that people use in government and it's called environmental justice or environmental injustice. And when you have a community that has too much of this kind of stuff, that's environmental injustice. And what we're creating here in the city of Los Angeles, and as far as we can tell, it's the first time that any city or county or local government in the country is actually doing this, we are creating an environmental justice zone that will require us as a city to be much more careful, much more methodical, and to actually decide whether or not we're going to let a certain amount of activity happen on a piece of land, which is in our authority, whether we're going to let them do it or not, based on not only what they're doing, but based on what their neighbors are doing and what the neighborhood is feeling and how it's being impacted. So, it's really important that we do this and that we pass this today because what we're looking forward to is the ongoing activity and the enforcement that we've been doing in this community with Rocky Del Godillo's office and the many departments and many levels of government from state government and federal government and our city and our local county. What we need to do is make sure that we're doing it right so that we can put the final nail on the coffin on this activity that's been affecting our children, affecting their health, affecting their livelihood, and this is going to actually make it one of the most effective ways of doing business ever in this country, right here in the city of Los Angeles. So, I ask for your support on this motion today and we are going to clean up Sun Valley and we've already been told by other people, elected officials in other parts of the state and the country, when you do this, please let us know how you did it because we want to do that too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, and again, thank you for your leadership on this issue and as a representative part of Sun Valley, I appreciate that you've included that portion and a portion of Councilmember Padilla's district, so it's really going to be a model not only for the city but I think for other jurisdictions up and down the state of California. Madam Clerk, that item is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item has been approved. Next order of business.
Item number 55 called special by Councilmember Perry.
Councilmember Perry. Ms. Perry? Item number 55.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. I'm trying to clear a little space over here. I am very excited to join my colleagues here today to have a conversation about a truly grand project here in the Civic Center. We are continuing the renaissance that is currently underway in the city and delivering a plan for Grand Avenue that will create more affordable and market-rate housing, park space, and jobs, and in particular, jobs for people who have long been disenfranchised, people who have been formerly homeless, ex-offenders, people reclaiming their lives. And all of this could not have been accomplished without a joint partnership between the city and the county, working together towards a common goal of creating housing and job opportunities. As a city and county family, we understood and still do understand the need for development of housing at all levels as well as the creation of park space. This is one of the many reasons why this project is so exciting. Three-quarters of this new development includes condominiums and a 16-acre park where an estimated 4,500 new residents may soon live. And I'm proud to say that 20% of the approximately 2,100 units will be affordable, continuing our joint effort to create housing that is inviting and diverse. Additionally, this project provides a wealth of job opportunities, both short term and long term, for people of our city, including 25,000 union construction jobs will be created and generated by this project. $1 billion, that's what the construction workers building this project and the suppliers and others supporting this effort will earn, and that is money that will be spent throughout the city. This project will deliver an annual payout of nearly $28 million to the state, county, and city of Los Angeles. This is money that can be used to fund new police, fill potholes, and meet other services throughout the region. So, Grand Avenue creates the downtown picture and for the region, balancing development occurring to the south and connecting our cultural and civic pockets with the financial district. And it complements our rapidly changing downtown, making it appealing to families who can now call downtown their end destination or a place called home. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam... I'm sorry, say again? Ms. Perry?
If there are questions, the executive director of the project is here to answer questions.
Great, thank you. And we do have my colleague, Councilmember Labonde, should like to say a few words.
Yeah. Ms. Perry, thank you for your work in the central part of the city and throughout all of your district and what's happening in downtown. I know Martha Wellborn is here. Would you give us a little rundown? It's the executive director and you can sit at the center table.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Happy to give you a very brief rundown. This is a very exciting project, a collaboration of the city and the county. It will total up to 3.8 million square feet and the 16-acre park. And the composition, as the councilwoman just described it, is... Will be largely residential but also with a large retail component and a hotel as a piece of a condominium tower. But a lot of public benefits, a lot of improvements will come along with this project. Beyond the civic park, there'll be 20% affordable housing units and living wages part of it. We're following all the CRA's social policies for the project. But I think most importantly, we're building on the momentum created by other projects on Grand Avenue, including the Cathedral of Our Lady of the Angels and Disney Hall itself, as well as Moca and the Colburn School, which were built a little bit earlier on. So, I think finally, after about 40 years, this project will finish up the Bunker Hill area.
Thank you. I just want a question to... I like trees, but there's no trees around Disney Hall. Are they going to come?
There's a... On the Disney Hall block itself, on that side of the street, there was a design intent on the part of the architect, Frank Gehry, to not have trees obscure the building. In fact, if you look carefully...
So, is that forever and ever and ever?
For the moment, for the moment, that's the way it is.
A moment, that's the way it is, all right.
That's right.
Also, another issue too, Ms. Wellborn, at First and Hope, which is opposite the grand Disney Hall, which is a flower, right? That's how Frank describes Disney Hall.
That's right. That's right.
There's a parking lot, Water Power Parking Lot. It's the northwest corner of First and Hope.
Right.
Have you envisioned anything for that space? Because I think that's a public space. It possibly could be a cafe or an outside meeting place above the parking lot so people could look up at the...
Mm-hmm.
On one side, they could look up at the Disney Hall. On the back, they could look out through the reflective ponds of the water and power and then out to the Hollywood sign.
I think it's a fascinating idea. We are held to plan the future of the area that the JPA oversees and that's not part of that area.
Not part of it.
It's not part of the area, but it's a fascinating idea, I think.
So, we'll continue to discuss that fascinating idea with the descendants of Mahalan.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Ms. Perry, again, you're transforming all of Los Angeles with this and I appreciate it greatly. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labonde. Our next speaker is Councilmember Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I had an opportunity to review some of this material and I had a question, if you could clarify for the people of Los Angeles. Now, this particular project, is it an overall revenue producer for the city or is it something that is going to overall cost the city more than the city will actually... Or governments in general because it's the county, not just the city, the city and the county, et cetera? Is this something that will actually bring revenue to the city as a whole?
It will bring an enormous amount of revenue to the city. I think, I mean, you could call it an economic engine in a way with all of the direct and indirect economic impact that it has for businesses.
Okay, directly. Because we use a lot of lingo in this building and government and stuff, but directly, there's some parcels involved in this project that actually belong to like the city and the county. And we're going to be doing long-term leases, correct?
That's right.
To private developers and they're going to build buildings and/or lofts or places for people to live or people to put up shops and sell wares, et cetera, and bring economic activity. But looking at those actual pieces of land, when they lease them to us for like 99 years or what have you, are they going to give us like a dollar a year or something like that? Is there some type of market value that we're going by? Is it going to translate into millions of dollars' worth of leasing money coming to the city over these years?
It does translate into millions of dollars of leasing coming to both the city and the county because the parcels are owned by both. And all of the money from the lease revenues that is going back into the project is not coming out of other tax rolls. It's coming directly, it's generated by the project. The public, you know, the public...
But...
Investment in the project is coming out of the project. It's created first.
Unfortunately, for our purposes today, it is quite complicated, all the little details, but to basically clarify at least one thing, these pieces of land, we are going to receive millions of dollars for their use of this land.
Absolutely.
And the city is still going to be the owner of the land in the long run.
Absolutely.
I mean, it will always be owned by the city and eventually turned back over to the city, hopefully with some nice buildings that actually are worth something in addition to the dirt, correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Speaking of the long-term leases, is there language in here or by the time we are done with the final version, are we going to have language with these leases that, for example, say, that, say in the year 2105 or 2110, when they give us back the land? And say they have a building that was built 70 years prior, that building might not have much value by then or something that might be more inclined to tear it down than actually continue using it. Is there going to be any clauses or anything like that that require them to keep a certain standard, to keep a certain upgrade so that we don't end up with these big pieces of concrete and steel that we end up having to use the expense to tear it down because it's really not useful anymore now that we are not only owners of the land but owners of the building now?
Absolutely. The ground leases and the development agreement will actually come back to this body after we've gone through the sequel review, which we're just beginning now. This is actually an unusual approval because it's at a master plan level, but the project is so big that it was important for all of us to come back to both the city council and to the CRA board and the county board of supervisors. So, the ground lease will come back to you. It absolutely will include that. I've already talked to my council to make sure that that's in there. There's no issue with it. In fact, the developer was partly selected because of their high quality and their vision about maintaining that quality through time.
Yeah. The reason why I say that is because I don't blame the public for being suspicious when they think that we're, you know, these developers who are very successful or what have you are going to be doing business with the city and then somehow we're going to be taken or what have you. I just want to make sure that we can assure the public that the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted.
Right.
Our attorneys are in fact knowledgeable and writing these things up to protect the city's interests, the people's interests, basically.
Right.
So, that is going to be done and we will be handling that in detail in the near future.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wellborn. Mr. Labonde would like to make another comment.
A quick question. I know I can appreciate the architects, no trees on Grand Avenue for the building there. But I understand the architect's going to be involved on the outside of Grand Avenue.
Right.
Will there be trees?
We're just beginning the design.
Okay.
So, I envision that there will be trees. We've always, we've thought about that and actually...
Stick up for the trees, Martha.
Stick up for the trees and for shade for people walking down the street.
Yeah.
The other issue is that ultimately, we will improve the rest of Grand Avenue from Second Street down to Fifth as well.
Right.
So, we do have a general plan, a conceptual plan now that certainly includes trees and in fact, the first piece was already completed with the completion of the concert hall. If you've seen the improvements out there from Temple to Second Street.
All right. And you know a little about history of Los Angeles, right, Ms. Wellborn?
A little bit.
What was the original name of the street?
Charity.
Very good. And what did the people of Charity do?
That I can't tell you.
They petitioned the city council in like 1887 to change the name because when people ask them where they live...
Charity Street.
They didn't like saying they lived on Charity.
The streets were Faith, Hope, and Charity.
Faith, Hope, and Charity. Where's Faith now?
It's probably in the middle of the park.
Middle of the park.
Or it's Olive. I don't know.
Bring Faith back, so it'll be good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labonde, as well. And there are a lot of us that are supporters, Martha, of trees, so we look forward to that and...
I agree with that. Thank you.
And the importance of this project and thank you, Ms. Perry, for your leadership on this issue. There are no other councilmembers on the speaker queue, so that item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item has been approved. Next order of business.
Item number 77 was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Councilmember Cardenas. Councilmember Cardenas. Item number 77.
Thank you very much. I was actually talking to a couple of my colleagues about this item just a few seconds ago. What we have here in the city of Los Angeles, I think it can honestly be characterized as a failure to prepare, a failure to communicate between our departments, a failure to prepare for the future. And unfortunately, for the last decades here in the city of Los Angeles and throughout Southern California and most of this country, all roads led to landfills. And whatever we do today isn't going to end the use of landfills, but what appears today is though we are not prepared as a city to move forward and continue using this landfill and in addition to that, be honest with our constituents and say, "We have a plan to actually figure out other ways to deal with our trash, your trash, our trash, the city's trash." There's a landfill that traverses the county of Los Angeles and the city of Los Angeles and that's the landfill that we're talking about today. That's the contract that we have had the opportunity to renegotiate over the next five years and to figure out what we are going to do with your trash. In my opinion, the city of Los Angeles generally has failed to prepare for the future and because of that, today we have a very difficult decision to make. Do we, as a city, your representatives, go forward and continue a five-year contract with BFI that we've had for the last five years and many years prior? Do we go ahead and do that? Or do we say, "I'm sorry, we're going to do something else"? Well, there's a fundamental problem. We don't have the something else in place. We're stuck, ladies and gentlemen. We are stuck putting our trash into landfills. Now, the question is, if we don't work out some kind of understanding, some kind of contractual agreement on your behalf, on the people of Los Angeles' behalf, maybe we continue to put it in the same landfill that we're talking about today. Or maybe it's a different landfill. Or maybe we actually have opportunities where we can truck it somewhere else or put it on a train and send it somewhere else. But the bottom line is, we don't have contracts with anyone to actually send that trash. But the funny thing about it is, the trash is accumulating on a daily basis, by tens of thousands of tons on a daily basis. And I expect, we expect, we all expect, that that trash is going to be picked up on time trash is gonna be picked up on time and then it's gonna go somewhere. The reason why I wanted to bring those things to light, and I'll push my button again because we only get three minutes out of time to speak, I just wanted to, to set the reality or the tone at the beginning of this discussion that we don't have alternatives available to us today and tomorrow and into the future. And one thing we need to be honest with the people of Los Angeles, maybe we do come up with a plan, maybe we do have solutions, maybe we do sign other contracts with other companies that do different things with our trash, recycle it, bury it, truck it, whatever they do. But the bottom line is, we need to be honest and say, that might cost more money. And the only place we get that money is from the taxpayer, the ratepayer, from the Angelino. Be aware of that. And I'll continue this discussion in another few minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Our next speaker is Councilmember Rosendahl.
Madam President, can I ask BFI to come up to the podium so I can ask some questions and suspend my time?
Yes. Probably at the, I think the city attorney's saying they need to go to the podium. Is that correct? The podium. Sorry, behind you.
My name is Greg Lockney. I'm district manager for BFI.
Good morning.
Arnie Berghoff, I represent BFI.
I'd like some history. I'm the new kid in the block, so I'd like to understand a few things. How much percentage of the landfill does the city of Los Angeles use?
Presently, the city delivers about 3,800 tons a day of the 6,600 tons a day that go into the county portion of the landfill.
And what percentage of that is of the landfill's usage on a daily basis?
That's, that's over 60% and that is just for city of LA residential waste. City of LA waste in general, commercial waste, et cetera, constitutes about 90% of what goes into the county landfill presently.
Are other cities using the landfill and other independent contractors and how much are they bringing in?
Yes, they are. They would, that would be the balance of the 6,600 tons less the 3,800, so roughly 2,600 tons a day.
I understand there is the city portion of the landfill that soon will be opened?
That is correct.
When will that be?
Next week.
And what will that capacity be in that part?
It will be 5,500 tons per day.
And the capacity for how much landfill over a period of how many years will it take to fill it?
The total capacity of landfill will be 12,100 tons a day on a daily, daily basis and approximately 25 years of capacity.
If the city of Los Angeles withdrew their usage of that site, would other cities pick it up and would it have a negligible effect on you? What about other cities in the county?
Presently, the market situation is one in which, according to County Public Works, approximately 8,000 tons a day and of trash in the, in the county of Los Angeles leaves the county every day. It goes to other counties such as Riverside County and Orange County. Over the next 10 years, two more landfills at least will be shut down, creating a rather tight market situation in terms of airspace, landfill airspace capacity. So over time, that volume that the city delivers us will be replaced with other volumes from other municipalities within the county.
So there's a greater supply of garbage than, than demand. In other words, you'll be able to move forward under any circumstances.
Absolutely, yes.
What is the present relationship between our city and your organization in terms of price per tonnage? I understand it's reasonable from a city's perspective.
Presently, the city charges are approximately $24 per ton. On a go-forward basis through negotiations over the last several weeks, there was some clarity brought to the most favored nation rate, as you would have it, where the city would basically be insured as long as they kept volumes at a certain rate, they would be the lowest price of any third party going into the landfill. So the city, in essence, has a very favorable rate going into the landfill.
With 11 months and 10 days left in the existing contract, is that right?
Approximately 11 months or so, yes.
Is there an opportunity with BFI to continue this discussion over the weeks ahead and reach a timeframe where people like me can be brought up to snuff? I understand there's something about the 22nd of July. What is that about?
June 28th was the last council meeting where this was addressed and discussed on the council floor. The city had till June 30th of this year, 2005, to make a decision, which is 12 months prior to the expiration of the contract, which is June 30, 2006. At such point, a motion was brought to the council that requested BFI to take a look at a number of things in the contract, clarify, delineate, make them clear to the city that the plans which the city would like to embark upon on the next several years, which is to use alternate energy, use alternate energies, paralysis, et cetera, et cetera, that that would not conflict with the present contract of the city. BFI, over the course of the last several weeks, has met with a number of council folks as well as with staff to highlight, and the city attorney, to highlight the fact that those types of activities would not in any way interfere with the contract that, that BFI presently has. In other words, BFI would not find the city in default of the existing contract if the city was to embark on those other types of technologies. So BFI has made that very clear and that is stipulated in Amendment Number Two of the contract. And so we felt, as of last Friday in our discussions with the city, that basically everybody, everything that we've been asked to within reason, we have presently done. This process, in all fairness, has, has lasted since September of 2003 in terms of RFPs issued. And at present, BFI is not willing to wait another 11 months to, for the city to make a decision on this issue. We have to go, go about our business for business reasons and move forward in terms of with or without the city bringing their waste into the landfill.
But I, I don't appreciate a gun to my head. I just came on board July 1st and there is 11 months and 10 days left. Is it possible for you to go back to your bosses and say, respect to the council deliberation, that we want to continue this for a period and let them work through their processes so that I'm not forced to have to vote?
With all respect, I think that if you're requesting a little more time other than tomorrow, the 22nd.
That's right.
I'd be willing to consider that, certainly. But however, I would definitely request a date certain to be set within two weeks of today, then.
I don't know when the date certain could be. The Mr. President has to see when he has the 13 of us around the horseshoe, which I'm sure will happen in a reasonable timeframe. I don't know what that timeframe is, but I would like your cooperation because the reality is, we as this great city have no alternative at this point. And my issue is not with you, but my question to you is, I would like you to be more flexible, allow us to go through the deliberations here where I can ask a lot of questions of the city and its commitment going forward on recycling and other issues before I'm asked to vote on an issue that I know is a no-brainer. We have no choice. We can't throw the garbage on the street and we have no other place to do it and we're not gonna find a rate any more reasonable than what you've put in place. But I do think that you can wait a while longer. It doesn't expire for another year. You have other demand groups that want to come into it. So with saying all of that, I'd like you to see if you could be more flexible.
I think we have been very flexible with the city. We, we could have said June 20, June 30th, that's it.
Right.
Take the contract as it is. Now, we've worked with the city. Over the last several weeks, we've had a multitude of meetings to discuss these issues. We came forward with what we believe are very significant concessions on the contract. So we have expressed that flexibility. For business reasons, however, I would say August 5th is a time date certain in which I'm willing to extend this allowance for the city to address this amendment to the contract.
I appreciate you saying August 5th. I am not agreeing with that or disagreeing with that, but I appreciate you saying that. Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Your, your time has expired, but if you'd like to push your button again, we'll get to hear from you again.
I sure would. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I ask the Bureau of Sanitation if they can come to the center table? I do have some questions. Do we have representatives here, please? I see Ms. Washington. Thank you. Beautiful for being here, staff. And I raise these questions because, one, I applaud my colleague Greg Smith in stepping up and putting forth a very dynamic proposal that covers many areas. And I raise this in the context of this contract because it speaks to the reality of time, preparation and having the, as we call in bureaucratic terms, infrastructure, the ability to move and implement and actually process what we have to do to create this quality of life that we all seek here in Los Angeles. So the questions I'm asking are pertinent to looking at, one, the plan that was, that was provided by my colleague Greg Smith. Again, I applaud him for such a strong effort, but I also want to put this in the context of our, for lack of better, reality of not being ready to just shut down and walk away from a landfill that we right now have in place and ready to go to tomorrow. So are you familiar with the California Integrated Waste Management Board's report to the state legislator this year regarding conversion technologies?
Yes, we've been following the legislation with regard to alternative technologies, yes.
What was the position of the board in regards to the conversion technologies?
Well, so far, the jury's still out in terms of whether it would count toward diversion credits. However, they are positive about the possibility, but it's still, the jury is still out on the determination of it. This is one of the things Councilmember Smith, you know, hoped to work on with regard to legislation and one of the motions and things we've been following as well. Because really, you know, they are still conflicted by emission control and other things that they want to review before they actually make a determination of how they will, how, what side they will take on this issue.
So the state is yet to be in a place to receive and determine and establish what we feel we need, given our end of the table?
Yes, but, but in the meantime, they are still progressive in this area. They're not in any way saying, no, it will never happen. They're just trying to figure out how do we make it happen.
Right, but the uncertainty is there?
Yes.
Okay. What was the public's and the environmental community's reaction to this?
Well, I'm not sure if I've read the environmental community's action. It's in the past, it's not been very positive, you know, in, in terms of what they look at. However, we think with full education with marketing this in a way that brings people to the reality that all of our landfills, no matter where they are in the region of California, will eventually be closed within the next 15 to 20 years, they realize that this is coming down the pike. So we need to do a full-scale public education program. That's one of the things the Bureau has been wanting to do and one of the things proposed by Councilmember Smith.
But the bottom line, there's uncertainty on both ends.
Pardon?
The bottom line, there is uncertainty on both ends.
Absolutely. There is, there is absolute uncertainty.
So lack of preparation, something we have to build up to. How would the Renew LA Plan interface with the city's solid resources plan?
Well, they really do complement each other. There's, you know, we, we have the URS contract that's currently working on this and are, are ready with their report to come out regarding what alternative technologies options exist. They've been looking at this over the past year. And Renew LA, they also have the Renew LA Plan and they're looking at that in ways that they totally complement one another and the Bureau's work in this area over the last two years. I, I know that sometimes the council has felt that the, the city hasn't moved forward, but the city has, the Bureau has been planning a long, a long time, since the closure of Lopez Canyon for other alternatives to landfills or even other landfill possibilities. So it's just a matter of getting, having money in those places and plans in place in order so we can move forward. So Renew LA and URS and the Bureau are in sync with one another.
Okay. The Renew LA Plan calls for placing one facility in each of the city's collection districts plus one additional facility to be determined. The plan explains that using existing collection districts is both equitable and practical distribution across the city. But there are already environmental justice issues inherent in the city's current layout of facilities. And we know this because of the disproportionate presence of these facilities in certain parts of the different neighborhoods. Is this plan perpetuating that problem?
Well, we hope that it won't perpetuate the problem. We realize that every community feels that there's, there's things that are in proportionate to them. What we hope to do as part of the public education program.
But isn't it, but isn't it true, though, that there are certain districts that have more than others?
You know, the airport will say it has more. People in Elsie Gundo will say it has more. So we realize, yes, you're right, the correct, you're correct, that every community feels that there are some things that are more than others.
I know how they feel, but there are some very solid numbers that speak to where they're located. That is something we need to understand.
Oh, absolutely, and it's something we plan to address. Absolutely.
Section by section of the city. It's not to say it's us and them. It's talking about capacity. It's talking about environmental justice issues. And we have yet to determine and identify the private facilities where they're allowed. And so those are two major factors that we each need to understand if we're moving forward as one city. Again, my questions are not to tear down the Renew LA. It's the reality check we need to have to understand the impact of how we can move forward. I frankly have about five to six more questions. We did our homework. I'm putting this on the record. Again, it speaks to how we build this up, how we're complimentary, but the bottom line is, in regards to this contract, for us to step away from it and go into millions and millions of dollars in the negative without a real strategy, a real alternative, is something we all need to assess. Thank you. And I'll push my button again.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Smith, do you wish to?
Yes, I was gonna move for a 10-minute public hearing. I understand there's cards on the issue.
Thank you. Colleagues, unless there's any disagreement to that, we will open a public hearing on this item. We do have four cards before us. If I had asked the speakers to be ready to, to speak when your name is called. The first is Mary Ann Keenholtz, followed by Wade Hunter, followed by Becky Bendixson and Ralph Croy.
Yes, good morning, councilmembers. My name is Mary Anna Keenholtz and I am a 37-year resident of Granada Hills. And I want to tell you, I want you to know because you don't live there, the BFI has been a very, very bad neighbor. And I was very interested to hear that they don't need this contract. I think that's interesting. I think that you shouldn't give it to them. They're not going to stop taking the trash tomorrow. They need to take it. They have a contract with the city. I have a great deal of faith in this city that if you meet and work on it, you can find the alternatives that are needed. And then you don't need to sign with BFI. You can find something else to do. There's certainly no reason to sign five years with this company when you have alternatives and you can do it. So I ask you, please, do not sign this contract. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Wade?
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Wade Hunter. I'm the president of the North Valley Coalition. And we are about to be dumped on again. Salute you. Even with the changes, it's still a bad contract. It's a contract that rewards BFI for being a bad neighbor and a contract that allows the city to once more put its trash problem in the eastern end of the San Fernando Valley. No environmental justice there, no environmental quality either. We obviously think that you should not approve the contract and to take the year available to you to seek new bids. But if you feel that you must approve it, then read the North Valley Coalition's June 6 letter that we sent to all of you. And also consider introducing the ordinances that we had proposed and pledge now to approve all of the ordinances containing Councilman Smith's Renew LA Plan and to remove your reliance on urban landfills. And in closing, I'd just like to applaud you for approving item number 33, the Sun Valley Environmental Justice Improvement Area. You know, I gotta tell you quite honestly, I think I got a bad in my area with my landfill, but I've been down there in that area, around Bradley with Waste Management's Bradley landfill. And I tell you, it makes me wanna cry. The area is so bad down there. And again, there in that same geographical area that I'm talking to you about, the eastern end of the San Fernando Valley, you guys have got to get your act together and just get out of the urban landfills. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bendixson.
Good morning, Madam President and fellow councilmembers.
Good morning, Madam President and fellow councilmembers. My name is Becky Bendixson. I appear before you today on behalf of the Granada Hills Women's Club. Although on paper, our city's diversion rate seems high, in reality, more trash is going to Sunshine Canyon than ever before. If you're really serious about recycling and saving precious resources, these are some practical steps for achieving that goal. Adopt all ordinances that accompany the Renew Green Print with a timeline implementation. Prepare new RFPs as soon as possible that would be issued to MRFs that guarantee the highest quantity of waste to be diverted. Adopt the Landfill Oversight Committee's recommendation that the city hauler's franchise fee be levied only on trash that has not been processed at a MRF or other recycling facility. Forbid the use of green waste as daily cover in order to discourage all jurisdictions from using this subterfuge to meet AB 939 requirements to recycle. Allow the community to participate in the joint powers agreements with the county to assure that conditions are not written by the proponent. Respond to our request asking each councilperson to give us as much time as you have given BFI and their lobbyists to meet with us so we can fully explain our recommendations. Statement written by Mary Edwards. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ralph Kroy, and then followed by Tessa McMaxwell.
My name is Ralph Kroy. The early landfills in the city did not have liners. The more recent ones do. Ruckelhaus, the former EPA head and BFI head stated, eventually, all liners leak, like the county's liner. The Sunshine Canyon landfill is about 200 feet above the Department of Water, Power and Metropolitan Water District water treatment plants, the largest in the country, serving 17 million customers. And it is almost across the street from the landfill. The mountain there raised 18 inches or about 18 inches in each of the 1971 and 94 earthquake, 36 inches in 23 years. The ground must be cracked for this to happen. The pioneers knew enough not to put the outhouse above the drinking well. We have done just that with diapers and a lake in the Sunshine Canyon landfill. I hope that we have set aside enough money and insurance to mitigate a highly likely water problem. The city is the greatest user of the landfill and will be the most liable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tessa McDowell.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Tessa Maxwell, and I am a White House correspondent and a former presidential adviser to William J. Clinton. I am standing here, I am just appalled at the fact that there's some negligence on the part of BFI on how they don't have the landfill that they need, and the time is running out, and at the same time, you have to consider air pollution. One of the things that I know that President Bush does not tolerate is negligence on the part of environmental usage. There is a grant that just came out that I did put, I just submitted an announcement of a grant that came to my home to, for Councilman Cardenas. It's a much-needed waste management grant that just came out from Sacramento. One of the things that I also had witnessed when I was living in the state of Cali, in the state, in the city of New York, they had the same problem. So you might want to call them to get a consultant because they found new landfills. They did their, they had an environmentalist come out, they sited the land, and they created the landfills. So that is my suggestion, that you call New York City Sanitation Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the end of our public hearing. We'll go back to Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. And if you can start the clock over, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, let's make it clear, we're not voting on Sunshine Canyon, whether it's going to be there today or tomorrow. We've said that before. Sunshine Canyon, unfortunately, is going to be there because the decision was made in 1999 by not anybody sitting around here today. I have no doubt that if this was before the council today, that this council would say no, because they know the environmental degradation that comes from landfills. And this council is the most environmental council in the history of the city of Los Angeles, and I'm proud to be a part of that. But it is before you today is the question, does the city of Los Angeles want to continue to participate in the defiling and degradation of one of our neighborhoods by putting our trash in that dump? Not whether we want the dump there or not, that decision was made, but whether we want to participate in that defiling of the neighborhood in one of our communities in the city of LA. I can't believe that anybody that sits here claims to be environmentalists would allow themselves to be a part of a decision like that that forces the city of LA to be part of the degradation of our community. It's one thing that it's there, it's another thing that we participate in it. That's what is morally wrong with this contract. I must say, I commend BFI. For the last two weeks, we have negotiated with them. I believe the amendments before you today really do make the contract better, but it doesn't negate the issue of whether we belong in that landfill and we want to be part of what we're doing to one of our own communities. Is that right? Is that morally right that we take that road? I think not. I want to ask some questions because some discussions taking place around here about what are we going to do? Chicken Little is running around saying the roof is coming, the sky is falling, the sky is falling. I would like Enrique Zaldivar and Rita Robinson, please come forward just a minute. And I'm not trying to put you on the hot seat, but we've got to ask some questions because these issues have to be out there. First of all, we did an RFP to get out of Sunshine Canyon. Mayor Hahn said, we want out. Is that's correct?
Correct.
In that RFP, we had one respondent, correct?
Correct.
Why only one?
Well, one viable respondent that could take our waste shed of 3,600 tons a day with waste management.
Viable?
Viable, meaning that they had actual landfill space available for us to go to on a guaranteed basis that fit a business model the city could get to.
Exactly what I wanted to hear. So we put a parameter on it that only one company could respond to it?
Well, several companies responded, but when we investigated their ability, that's when we found out they didn't have the ability.
To meet the criteria that you set?
Right, correct.
All right. Now, Enrique, I know you were the one that really negotiated with all these people, also, what were some of the other options out there that we rejected because it didn't meet that very narrow description that you put in that RFP?
Councilman Smith, Enrique Zaldivar, Bureau of Sanitation. The distinct difference between what we put out and perhaps what might have permitted a wider opening for proposals was that we needed to have a system that would be ready to go come 2006, July 1, 2006. Not only July 1, 2006, but even at this time, we would need to be able to have certainty in that system to come to you, your body here, to tell you, this is another viable option. So there was very little room given for development time of something that was not ready to go.
Very nice. Now, I want to ask you. I asked you, what were some of the alternatives that were brought forward that we rejected because it didn't meet that narrow description that you just described?
There was a proposal there that had the potential to have a landfill in San Diego County. That was a proposed landfill, not an existing landfill. So that was a proposal that did not meet the criteria, Councilman.
Okay. That's the only one?
There was...
Did you have any MRFs come forward? Did you have any alternative technologies come forward? Anybody said, we're working on this idea, we think we can be ready?
We asked for landfill alternatives. We didn't ask for alternative technologies in this...
All right, so that was out of the mix. Did we ask for MRFs?
The request was...
The answer's no.
Liberal enough to have allowed that.
The answer's no. We did not ask for MRFs.
We did not specifically ask for MRFs.
We did not ask for any other transfer opportunities. We didn't ask for anything other than...
Transfer opportunities did come forth.
Okay. Other than the San Diego, which wasn't permitted yet, but they're working on. The point is, there are things out there that we precluded from the RFP. In fact, we wrote the RFP in a way that only Waste Management could respond.
The RFP was restricted to disposal. That, that is true, but that was the intent. It was a replacement to Sunshine Canyon.
All right. My time is up. I will come back. The point I wanted you to think about is what Ms. Perry brought up yesterday and what I think we need to talk about today is, there are alternatives out there, there are opportunities out there. We chose not to look at them when we should have, and now we have to look at a contract that is wrong for the people of Los Angeles, it is wrong for the San Fernando Valley, it is wrong every way you look at it, and we haven't really looked at what options are out there in a broad stroke. And I'm going to come back to you and suggest to you that we take advantage of this next year to do that, to not limit ourselves artificially, but let's really look at the world out there of trash and see what options are out there and go forward on another track. That is the way we need to be thinking as a city. That's what we should have been doing 10 years ago, and the only reason we're here today is because nobody ever forced our departments to go out and do that broader search, forced us to actually come up with a solution. We really limited ourselves. We limited ourselves. And the solution is, we're going to continue to degrade our own city by our choice? How can you make a moral decision like that?
Our next speaker is Councilmember Dennis Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. I know that Councilmember Smith has spent a lot of time putting a program together for the people in that community. I used to live up in that community. And I know that I traveled down Balboa, Balboa and I guess Rinaldi, where they have a sign on the northeast corner, "The Community Outrage and Concern." Those homes were built after the landfill was established. I look at Mountain Gate, Mountain Gate along the San Diego freeway, used to be a landfill. And I remember being a young police officer in Los Angeles and traveling up and seeing this massive landfill, and now it's Mountain Gate. We've run out of space. The question is, what do we do in the future? And obviously, technology today is much different than it was 20, 25 years ago. When I look at New York, a number of years ago, that put their trash on a barge and it was floating around trying to find a place to land, I don't want to end up with a situation like that in Los Angeles. Our sanitation department picks up the refuge, they deposit the refuge, and I think most people in Los Angeles are pleased with the service they receive from Department of Sanitation as far as the regularity of the pickup. The question is, what has the department done? And I know that with term limits, we're here for a short window, and this should have been explored years ago. While this contract has to be done, and we have a year continuing, if they haven't kept up to pace, and they haven't kept pace with technology, and it's no longer the sunshine issue, it's the issue of 20 or 25 years, whatever the termination date or the capacity date, which the county and the city split. And I've visited the site, I've seen what it looks like, and I know the impact on the neighborhood, and I know the impact on traffic, et cetera. But the vision that we have, where are we going to put it? If we say no, and philosophically, to say no because of the constituents that I've made promises to, that I'm not going to support the continuation of that, where do we put it? Where does it go? I've seen concepts of put on a rail car and transport it out to the middle of the desert. And I've heard all kinds of things. In third world countries, they throw it in the ocean. Well, we were sued by Heo the Bay, we're now taking care of that issue. What we need to do is find some immediate remedy, and what we're doing right now is trying to backpedal and figure, because the gun's at our head on this contract, and we've got a year left, yet that landfill, by permit, I understand, is going to be open, whether it's us or someone else, what are our alternatives? Not five years, what are alternatives now? If they were to shut the door tomorrow because of whatever, and say, okay, we're shutting the door, Sunshine's closed, I don't know if we have any other landfills that we can use, what do we do with our refuge? Do we put it on trucks and roam around the city trying to find a place to dump it? I mean, what is, what is the solution? The immediate solution, not 20 or 25 years down the road. And I don't blame you, I don't fault you, but we know clearly, technology is much different, refuge is much different, the recycling is much different. We now have three cans, we used to have one can. We used to have incinerators, we no longer burn because of smog. Can you respond to that, please?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Zine. It's exactly what I've meant with the staff about, you know, seeing this, this, going down this track. We do have some immediate place, things in order that if we were not allowed to go to Sunshine after the one year, or even if it was tomorrow, that we would have alternatives that we would bring to the council for other possible landfills, probably outside, within the county of Los Angeles to start with, but eventually outside of the county of Los Angeles, that we would have to begin working with and bringing to your table. All of these alternatives of an immediate need would require us to put money and staff and time into that would fit the, a business model that we could get it there within a day. Because, you know, if we're not going direct, we go direct from the valley to Sunshine now, and we don't own, we only own one transfer station, we contract with two others, and we would need to come to you with a budget proposal that shows you how much more it would cost us to go to the other places, but we have immediate fixes that we could put in place to take our refuge to, where we would not disrupt service. Because, I'm glad you asked the question, because this really is a discussion of about service to 750,000 residents of the city of Los Angeles. That's what we're really discussing. And so the Bureau's requirement, my requirement, is to make sure we don't disrupt the service to the constituents. And so we would find other places, they would have to be landfills to begin with, because we have, the alternative technologies do not exist within the state that would be able to take our refuge currently. But then we would have to set aside site control, land acquisition, and funding for other alternatives in the future. So we would have to have money banked to begin that process as well. So as we pay for our immediate need to get to landfills and not disrupt service, we would also have to have funding, site control, land acquisition, and staffing to begin to process a finding and beginning to invest in our alternatives for the future.
And we don't have that now.
Not currently. We do have, in this current budget, we do have money set aside for an integrated resource plan to begin the discussions, but we don't have money set aside for land acquisition and staffing for an immediate stop to going to Sunshine in the future.
And I know my time's run over. I just got one more question, if you'll just indulge me there. Our population is not reducing, it's increasing.
Correct.
And we know the population in this region is increasing. Have we made contingency plans for the additional population and the refuge connected with additional population?
Yes, we're looking at plans that will deal with not only population control, but also increase recycling, because we know that if we can, as much as we can divert, that's a good thing for us. So we're looking at both sides of that issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Our next speaker is Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. If you could hold my time, and Mr. Fujioka could come to the table? And you folks should stay there because he may ask you. I would like you just to walk us through the numbers, please, Mr. Fujioka. Let's start with, what are the fiscal parameters of the current contract? And hold my time. Just walk us through all the numbers so we get them all on the table.
I want to have our sanitation folks help me, but basically, it's my understanding that we're paying what's characterized as a gate rate of about $24 a ton right now? And if this, if this contract doesn't go through, that could increase to as much as, was about $41, $42?
Walk through, start at the beginning, walk us through all the numbers. What's current? What is the option? I guess it's a five-year, multi-year option? And what are the alternatives to that? Walk us through numbers.
Okay. The current contract annual cost for BFI is about $24 million a year. In the event of an option, as Mr. Fujioka indicated, if we were to pay the not preferred rate at BFI, the gate rate is $41.
Now... You know, you just, just do me this favor, don't, don't mix apples and oranges. First, tell me, on the current contract, you can give me the total figure and give me the per-ton figure. Then tell me, under the option, what's the total figure, what's the per-ton figure? Then tell me if the city doesn't...
I got you.
...reach that agreement with BFI or finalize that agreement and had to pay a daily rate or whatever it is? What's that figure? Just, just so we get...
Very good.
Just be organized.
I got you. The annual cost, again, existing contract, is about $24 million a year or a per-ton rate of just under $24 per ton.
Okay.
If we...
So it's about a million tons, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's a good base figure for simplicity.
Okay.
The gate rate at BFI is, per ton, $41 per ton. So we're talking about $41 million.
Okay, Mr. Fujioka, what, by what percentage is 41 greater than 24? You're good at this stuff. It's 50% increase?
No, it's much more.
85%.
Yeah, I was going to say about 80%, 85% increase.
All right, so the current rate is 24. What's the option that we have with them? The five-year option, what would that rate be? Say what we're paying now?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, the, the five-year option would put us at an annual escalator of about 3% from the base. The annual escalator of about 3%. So from the 24 million per year, it would escalate at no more than 3% per year for the next five years.
And give me those numbers.
About 700,000 a year if it's 3%. Seven, they grow in increments because it's compounded, so it's about that much.
So over fi, at the end of the five-year period, that's about a four to five million dollar and could be, could be up to 30 million a year.
In the low 30s.
Okay. And what about that gate rate? Might that go up over the next five years? So there's 41 figure is what you're expecting in the first out year. What would you be expecting in the fifth out year?
You know, that's strictly driven by market, I believe. I would expect it to go up as well.
Well, how has, has it gone up over the past five years? Do you know?
I, I, I don't know.
That's something the operator would have to answer, because that, again, is driven by, by the market. It's not, you don't have to mean if a contract is a much lower...
I, I understand it, but, but, Mr. Cardenas knows the answer to the question.
I, I think the, the question was misunderstood. Have gate rates gone up, not at BFI, have gate rates gone up in the industry over the last five years? That's basically your question, right? Thank you.
The answer is yes.
Do you know by approximately how much?
I would be, I would be guessing, Councilman.
Okay, Katie, if you can try during the hearing to get the information, that would be great. So, Mr. Fujioka, please explain to us in fiscal terms what our options are here, and, and what the impact is on the city budget, and, and what you think is, is advisable to us fiscally.
At this point in time, assuming that we stay because of the, because we don't have any options in front of us right now, if we, beyond the, this next fiscal year, we get into the following fiscal year, that we stay at Sunshine, the, the increase would go from 24 to 41, basically. $24 million to $41 million. Now, we have Councilman Smith's plan, and I know he's going to aggressively pursue the plan. What we can put in place in the next, in the next year will be critical to how we would mitigate that. The problem, there's, there's another problem associated with identifying the fiscal cost, because in the event we choose not to go to Sunshine after, after this, this particular fiscal year, and we go to another location, the key would be what that location will be. We know, we know that Allen County has said very strongly that they're not going to accept our trash. At least one person has, one supervisor has, who represents the area, which would be the most likely designation. Other adjoining counties, such as Oren and Inyo, have also expressed strong concerns. If we should go out to another county, or even another state, depending on the length, will have fiscal impact. There's also, you know, Rita had mentioned, we have basically three transfer stations. One we own, two that we, we basically rent. Will we need another transfer station in a different part of the city to also help mitigate the cost? And then, will it be, will it be transported from the city through trucks or through rail? That's also a cost factor. The biggest problem with identifying the cost, that minimum would be 17 million, minimum. The largest problem with identifying the true cost is there's so many uncertainties. How far will we have to transfer? How many trucks will we have to buy? How many additional staff will we have to buy? What land will we have to buy for another transfer station? How much will it cost, will it cost to implement some of these initiatives? In the long term, I'm full, I'm full support of these different initiatives, but the short term will be an impact.
And then, and then how do those costs get paid for?
They are a general fund obligation.
What would be your recommendation as to how the city pay for them from the general fund? I mean, do we, you, you do the city's budget every year, Mr. Fujioka. Would you recommend that we slash 200 police officers from our budget? Where would you, where would you recommend we get the $20 million from?
We have a number of challenges with the budget as we go forward, and we have, I think, a collective commitment to, to improve our, our public safety resources, which translate to police officers. Because, and I've said this before, and taken great criticism for this, but because this service has a fee, that fee should be increased to support any modifications for that service, and that's a trash collection fee. If we were to increase it by, to cover the difference of the $17 million, essentially you're looking at little under a $3 a month increase.
I mean, so is that, is it, just, just so I could understand what, what you're saying, is that, are you saying that one logical way to do what, what, what some of the council want to do today would simply be to make an agreement that if incremental costs would have to rise, because the city would be choosing an alternative, to just agree to, to, to raise people's rates, that increment? That would, that would cover it, right? If people were willing, people were willing to say that we, we, we want to raise people's taxes or fees to cover this incremental cost, then that would cover your fiscal concern, right?
It would cover it, but to, to, to the degree of which we'd have to raise the fee is subject to so many unknowns right now. Even though the three is the minimum, it could cover it, but the three is the minimum, once we start taking it outside the city limits, and even, even more so, outside the county limits, there's an exponential factor to that. It gets much more expensive.
Is there any reason, now switching to a non-fiscal topic, is there any reason to believe that if the city declines to exercise this option and declines to go along with the five-year extension with the folks who operate the Sunshine Dump? Is there any reason to believe that trash will not continue to be dumped there as much as the market will bear?
There's no reason to believe that, as far as we know. It's a business. I mean, they'll operate their business the way they see shit.
So the, so the trash is going to keep going in there no matter how we vote today? Is that, is that accurate?
Correct. As I have said before, just because we don't shop at Kmart means, doesn't mean Kmart closes. It would, it would just mean we don't shop there.
It'll just mean that we're shopping on Rodeo Drive?
Correct.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's the choice today, or maybe?
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reed, let me ask you, one term Mr. Smith used, and I wasn't familiar, is a Murph. What is that, and what does it do?
That's where the, the trash is collected in the black bin and then is sort, hand sorted to take out the recyclables that people may have mixed into their black cans that, you know, so that it's a hand sorting of such at a facility, that, that we try to pull out as much recyclable as possible. Then the rest that is recyclable is taken to a recycling center and diverted, but the other that is really refuse is then taken somewhere else, mainly now to a landfill.
How many of those do we have?
We have one. We operate one.
Okay. Now, was there a reason that that wasn't put into the RFP?
Well, I don't think it was, it was proposed, it wasn't so much that it wasn't put into the RFP, but dirty Murphing is a kind of a, can sometimes be a seedy industry as well, because you want, you want it to be a covered environment, it's a kind of a hand sorting. So it's, it's kind of a dirty job in and of itself. It's, so it's, it's not so much that we didn't, we didn't go out to look for dirty Murphing, because eventually, after you sort, you still have to landfill. So even if somebody proposed a dirty Murph process, which is what we call it, then that process then would require a landfill for you to take the residual refuse to.
What, what would we think we'd be eliminating out of the landfill by having access to more Murph?
Oh, I don't know percentage-wise, I'm not sure.
Councilman, our infrastructure right now is built on clean Murphing, that is, that is clean recyclables. Blue recyclables, blue container recyclables are brought to a Murph. What remains in the black, we have estimated that there may be about 10% recyclables that really should go in the blue container. We need to capitalize on our existing infrastructure and get those recyclables into the blue. And what could be pulled out of the black container in a dirty Murphing operation, I would, I would venture to say that it would be marginal if we can get it over in the blue.
But what we pull out, is that something that would immediately be recyclable, that you can use, or would it eventually end up in the landfill anyway because it was unusable? Or you couldn't recycle it?
No, it would have to be recyclable, for it'll be pulled out, it would have to be...
When you say dirty, would that impede our ability to recycle?
We, we wouldn't suggest that we compromise our existing infrastructure by going to a pure dirty Murphing, which is...
No, I'm just saying, if, if the concern was why we didn't review more of those, making them available on our RFP, I'm just trying to get a sense of what we'd have benefited if there were more of them.
Well, I, I mentioned 10% of what's in the black would be recyclable under the blue. Now, there's an organic content that is in the black that could conceivably be composted and other things, and therefore recyclable. So there would be significantly more under that scenario.
Okay. Let me just ask, if you could walk me through, if the vote today or in the future says, we're not going to renew the contract, we have 11 months, what's the scenario we have to consider to be operational in some other format as of July or June of next year?
Okay, well, we've, if we decided that we only wanted to operate under the one-year process, then we would have 11 months to put together an RFP or a bid process that would tell us exactly what was available and quickly make a decision on the alternatives that we want to take into, whether they were Murphing, or composting, or whatever it is that we want to follow as a methodology as we move forward, and then make sure we bid that out and find out what the cost would be, including landfilling. Because it wouldn't, all of it couldn't be Murphed or composted, it would be landfilling. It would be a combination of a number of things over a period of time.
Okay, what would be the timeline, the best-case scenario to get that back, the RFP back?
And we would have to, you know, in order to have it in place and ready by Ju, July 1st next year, we'd have to have a very quick turnaround within the next quarter.
Within the next three to four months.
In order to make sure, because then that would involve our business model as a city as well, because we don't know what those processes and locations would be that would operate the 750,000 households, and how that will impact staffing, trucks, sites, those things.
So you're saying that within three months, we'd have something back that would tell us in some instances, whether there are issues that we could not comply with, we couldn't afford, but ultimately, we'd have to dump in some landfill somewhere?
Well, we still have landfilling as one of the many diverse options that may come back. Yes, it would have to be, because there's not 3,600 tons of composting that we could do a daily basis.
If we found one of those less moral locations outside of the city, what are our options?
Well, I mean, the point that I'm trying to look at is the fact that knowing the opposition that exists, it would have to likely be outside of LA County.
And if I understand your answers earlier, those are being limited by actions of the Board of Supervisors and...
You know, they could be, they could be impaired by actions of the Board of Supervisors or by other communities. I mean, you know, we're going through biosolids with Kern County. I mean, so, I mean, there is going to be, I think the real answer to this that would probably be the best answer is diversification. I think any one place that felt all of it was coming to would be, feel overly impaired, but I think if we could try to diversify it in a number of places, it might be less stressful for everyone.
But are those available? I mean, do we know those off the top of our...
There, oh, there are a lot of them available. It's just a matter of how much money and how many resources and how much of a business plan will impact the city to do it.
Okay. And the other issue is while we're going forward on this, that we've basically lost access to the current location?
We will, yes.
So therefore, and then will that still be available for other dumping?
Yes, for others, for other people, yes.
And being that we are probably the only one with 4,000 tons a day, it would be probably four or less trash, but over a longer period of time, to fill that landfill?
Possibly, but that's probably true, because we're one of the largest providers.
If we moved out, do we have the ability to, if they went out and got contracts from other cities to close that landfill?
I would probably not be the best person to ask about, I don't know about the business of closing a landfill. I mean, that, that's beyond my scope.
Who would be the person that would answer that?
Yes, city attorney.
Is the city attorney here? I'm just wondering, what is the city's ability, if we stop using it, to close the current landfill?
Keith Pritzker, Deputy City Attorney. The current landfill, as you know, is in the county jurisdiction, and we've, in fact, held up the opening of that landfill for five years because of legal challenges that we successfully brought. So we don't have any control over what occurs in the county. And as you know, the city approved in December of 99, the expansion of that landfill back into the city. And we have to, you know, they have entitlements, we really don't have an ability unless we wish to end on the receiving ends of a taking lawsuit and wish to basically compensate them for the value of the land.
So we have no ability to control the county side?
Yes.
And the city side, we'd have to basically eminent domain it?
Well, we'd have to pay them the, the value, and we, we did end up in the receiving end of a lawsuit by BFI in the mid-'90s for a billion dollars.
Okay. And so if we can, if we do not take it over, then we'd have to, they would have the ability till it fill to keep having contracts bringing trash into the city from a variety of places?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have no control other than buying it to close either the county or the city's landfill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll push my button again.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, President Padilla, and colleagues. I know this is a tough decision for all of us and issue, because as I think Mr. Smith mentioned earlier, this is probably one of the most environmentally sensitive, pro-environment city councils that we've seen in a very, very long time. And that is something for us to, to celebrate. I, I've been listening and share the concerns that people have about fiscal issues and responsibility, as well as the importance of responding to a need of a particular community in which I grew up, as many of you know, in Granada Hills, and used to go to the, the dump with my father on the weekends to take discarded items that we had. A lot has changed, thank goodness, from that period of time. But what hasn't changed is that that location has impacted that community, and we've continued to be dependent upon landfills in the city of Los Angeles and not changed our business as usual attitude. We have become dependent. And as I hear the doom and gloom, as skies falling, and again, I'm not adverse to kind of taking that in understanding, but we probably could go back 20 years when we talked about recycling. When we talked about recycling many years ago, it was going to cost us a lot of money to do the right thing. It's going to cost us a lot of money to be able to recycle and to separate, and it was going to be difficult, and the taxpayers were going to have to absorb that responsibility, and what did that mean? We survived that. Now we, again, have some challenges because we're unclear as to the amount as we're talking about and going forward. But I think we have to, you know, remember, some of us are old enough, and some are even older than me. Who's that guy in the corner over there's oldest in the, okay, Bernard? You remember this, when we talked about recycling, and again, the challenges. And so I think we have to put this in context. We do have, correct me if I'm wrong, $3.1 million in the budget for planning for alternatives to landfills. Is that correct?
In the, in the, yes, there's money available in the unappropriate balance for some of the, some of these costs.
Some of these costs that we've been talking about.
Right.
Okay. So there is some, some dollars that have been put out there. I think the other issue that was brought up, I think is by Mr. Smith, was relative to the RFP process. And we all know, if you're a business and you think it's a done deal, why am I going to waste my time? They're going to go ahead and extend the contract, you don't bid on it. You don't consider it. Until sometimes, and again, I know there's a balance there, sometimes when we have fewer alternatives, some of those businesses might charge us more because they know we have fewer alternatives. One of the messages to send today is that we, we do have a year. It's not that next week, and I appreciated Ms. Robinson, and we were chatting over here, Mr. Labonde and I, about your, your long history with the city, and you've now become an expert on transportation, housing, and trash. You could get a job, I think, anywhere.
A double zero is what I'm becoming.
Appreciate, appreciate your, your being here and your kind of understanding and... Appreciate, appreciate your, your being here and your kind of understanding and, and commitment to this. But I think, colleagues, the way I have been feeling about this is not accepting the status quo and challenging ourselves, saying that we're not going to accept the business as usual. We're not going to have this dependence. We are not going to, I guess, respond to that the sky is falling. And so I, my time has now gone over as well. That three minute goes fast. But I, I just know that we're all struggling with this and recognize for all of you that are sitting around this room, that this is not an easy vote for any of us. But just remember what, what kinds of issues, not only in recycling, but hiring more officers, what's most important for the city. It sometimes costs us more. Let's try to limit that impact to the city, but I think we can find some alternatives and lessen our dependence on those landfills. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Labange.
Thank you very much. Ms. Robinson, in your bureau, we own 47 acres, 4,700 acres in Kern County?
Yes, we own 5,000 acres.
5,000 acres. And what do we do up in the 5,000 acres? What do we take up there?
We spread our Class A biosolids on an operating farm. We sell, we raise crops for cattle and, and farm usage, and we sell those crops.
And that product comes from the Glendale, Los Angeles reclamation plan and the Hyperion plan?
Hyperion, yes.
Hyperion and those plants. So it goes from one part of the city, goes to another county north of Los Angeles County. How many miles is that from Los Angeles?
I really don't know. You probably asked in 200 miles.
Eagle Mountain's 225 miles east here, you know, 500 miles difference between that. Greg, you made some very good points about that, but still about the challenge of today. And if we could, I'll, I'll say, let's go to San Fernando and Duran right now and have a trash-to-energy plant there. We see the South Los Angeles farmers come, and that's an argument of 20 years ago, on a trash-to-energy plant, on an old city yard that's probably been a city yard for 75 years. This is a very big issue. The one issue that really always worries me is when you come to water issues, and the Jensen Metropolitan Water Filtration Plant is there, and our own Silmar plant is there, but studies have shown that this does not affect the water system. Is that correct?
Correct.
Does not affect the water system. And I don't know who to ask this question here, but if, if you could help me, Greg, if I'm right now in the neighborhood, on the last street in, in the area off of Balboa, where one lives, and if I look behind me, there's about a 1,500 peak, and there's a mountain, how, how big? 826 feet up, there's a mountain, and then it goes down. Where would Sunshine Canyon be? If I'm on that backyard, and I know I talked to some of the neighbors when I drove up there one day, some time ago, the hill comes down to Sunshine, would it be coming down at like Broadway, or would it be Grand, or would it be at the Four Level? Just to give us a feel, because have you been there, Bill? Okay, all right.
The nearest home will be a quarter mile from the rim of the landfill. The rim of the landfill will go above the natural ridge line the way it's currently permitted.
Right.
Unfortunately, that was really dumb on the city's part, but the people standing a quarter mile away, when it's full capacity, will see it, just like Bradley has seen from the street level.
Right. How much of this, thank you, how much of this side, thank you, Greg, on the city side, if we're just dumping in the city side, how much do we have under our jurisdiction? How much could we say we don't want to, because I know they did that same thing at Toyon Canyon, they went way above because they feel it's going to go down after a 30-year period. Could we ask that they not dump all the way up to the top so it affects that ridge line?
Well-
Let me ask a question there. Hold my time for a second. Can I ask BFI this question of the top tier of what a landfill will be? Because one thing I do think is the view of what is this hillside shed behind mountain shed 800 feet, are you going to go above the hillside ridge there?
Dave Edwards, BFI, Director of Projects, the landfill will absolutely not be visible from the surrounding community. Absolutely not. It will be offset, the, the highest elevation will be approximately 2,000 feet, be offset from the ridge line, and absolutely not be visible from the community.
Thank you very much. You know, when we talk about issues, when we talk about issues, whether it's at 39th and Figueroa on a Saturday when SE is congesting the area to watch the national champs play football and the parking impacts, when we talk about when you go to an open-air theater up Vermont Avenue to the Greek Theater and enjoy that, the impacts of the people that live there, we all have impacts. And I don't know if what the value of the homes, I want to know the value of the homes of this, Greg, if you would know the values of homes have changed because its relationship to the half a mile of, over a mountain in this area, the value of these homes have changed. Have they gone down because this is a landfill that's there? Someone would know, someone's in real estate. We ask questions about tipping fees and gate fees, so-
It's hard to tell because of the real estate market losses, but I can tell you the homes in North Granada Hills of the same size and construction and type are cheaper than they are a half a mile away in North Ridge. Draw your own conclusion.
Are they cheaper in North Ridge?
Granada Hills.
They're cheaper in Granada Hills because they get the noise of the Golden State Freeway?
Well, we have the 118 in North Ridge.
It's below the surface. The noise doesn't travel. It's, you know, if you're a sound engineer, you could have that. But anyway, these are all factors to the city, when Wendy talked about struggling, and everybody's struggling on this vote here. There's factors. 4,700 acres, 5,000 acres in Kern County from, from the, and I'm not pointing that to Bill, it's a love point, from the Hyperion Sewer Treatment Plant, gets trucked up the San Diego Freeway, past this landfill, all the way to Kern County. And the Kern County supervisors are kicking us out, right? They're kicking us out.
They like to.
They're kicking us out. So I know everybody has very tough decisions, but Bishop Canyon, Allegiant Park suffered for years, Griffith Park, Toyon Canyon suffered, Lopez Canyon, all this stuff. And Eagle Mountain is 225 miles east.
Okay, we are now on the round of members speaking for a second time. And I have on the queue Mr. Cárdenas, followed by Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Parks. Mr. Cárdenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some questions for Mel Rita. How much are we paying per ton to recycle versus using landfills? Roughly?
We actually receive a revenue from the recyclables councilman. It's about $15 per ton versus $24 for disposal of, so it's close to a $40 swing there.
What do you mean by that? Can you clarify?
15 revenue, $20, $24 avoided cost. You added the two of them, it's $39.
The difference?
Yes.
Okay, so you're saying it's more expensive for us to put it into a landfill today than it is to recycle?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the natural question for, for that is, well, why didn't we just keep recycling until 100% of our trash is recycled?
Then the factor that weighs in is the recyclability of the item. So it's not just capturing them, collecting them, but being able to market them, sell them, use them, and so forth. So we, we are driven largely by that as well. All of what we currently recycle has a market, has a knowledge, has a use, and very fortunately, now the commodities are such that they have a real value, a positive, positive value.
Now, for example, when it comes to mulch, that's one of the things that we recycle. They take the green waste and they'll make it into something and maybe reuse it, kind of like as fertilizer or something like that, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Are we, is the market boundless there? I mean, are we continuing to be able to create more mulch, and then there's always a place to take it or what have you?
The, the market on mulch is, is different. That actually does cost, cost us money. It's, on the average, say, $28 per ton?
It costs us?
It costs us to process. Now, we, we have been successful in bringing the price down, and we see it continuing to go down. And so that's the, the upside of that. You know, we started at $35 per ton, now we're at an average of $28 per ton, and-
How many tons a day are we picking up off the street? Blue trash can, black trash can, green trash can?
Total, about 6,000 tons per day.
About 6,000 tons a day, so on a five-day week, that's about 30,000 tons a week. And in 52 weeks out of the year, we're talking about one and a half million tons that our Angelinos are producing. We're picking it up, thank God. Every day that they put it out, we pick it up.
Correct.
So the bottom line is, how does that mix look, basically, the roughly, how does that 1.5 million tons a year, how, what are we doing with it? Where are we sending it?
Well, I think the city has taken great strides in making sure that environmentally, even if it costs us money to process green waste, we have elected to process it versus then landfill it. So that's one way, one part of the puzzle. So it's about, you know, 3,600 tons is what we end up in refuse or in landfills, and the rest is green waste and, and the rest is, is divided between recycling. So two, I would say, two-thirds of it are good, good, maybe one-third of it is really used in a positive way, in, in an environmentally good way. And then the other is in terms of land, is landfill.
Okay. Now, what's the likelihood that if we were to take the tonnage that's going to the Sunshine Canyon, take that gross tonnage a year from now, the way the picture looks today, what's the likelihood that that capacity, we could fill it elsewhere? With alternative uses other than landfills?
Well, right now, there aren't a whole lot of other alternatives available other than landfilling. And even if we murfed it, some of that would still only take out a percentage. And some of, so right now, technologies that we're talking about with Renew LA and URS and some of the, don't really exist other than landfills until we develop those technologies. There are other organic waste measures that we can take, but those still have to be developed in, in terms of facilities, making sure that they're done. So it, the likelihood would be we would still need some landfill capacity somewhere until those technologies were invested in, cited, invested in, and built. They're not impossible to do. It would just take us the opportunity to have the resources to do them and the willfulness to do them.
Now, these alternative, whether it be alternative technologies or MRFs or what have you, how long does it take for them to actually say, "We're going to actually build a plant that doesn't exist today"? Is it months? Is it years?
Well, you know, I mean, I mean, really, it's up to us. I mean, we've, we've had this discussion with Lopez. We know if we find, when we close Lopez, if we find sites, if we find land, which is the first place, get site control, you're looking at environmental issues, you're looking at investment of money, you're looking at possibly partners, you know, so you're looking at a number of years possibly before we could be actually built based upon the parameters that, you know, that we prescribe, because environmentally, we're still going to have to do an EIR, anything that we do like this.
You mean an environmental impact report?
At least an environmental impact report.
And that takes months and months and months just to even get it?
It can.
And we have to have public meetings, et cetera. And any site that would actually go through that process, they probably would have public meetings beyond just the environment, the required meetings.
Oh.
They'd probably have other neighborhood councils and other organizations would want to have meetings.
Even to get site control, you would have to have that. Even before we began the process of the EIR, we would have to start that.
Okay, so basically, if we're going to be looking at a solid opportunity of alternatives to putting this money just directly into a dump site like we're doing with this tonnage per day right now, we're talking about easily two to three years away, if everything goes very, very well, and communities are willing to accept these alternatives in their backyard, in their neighborhood, et cetera. We're still looking at several years before we can actually honestly tell people of Los Angeles, "We've found a place to put your trash, and we're going to be able to put it there, and we've signed a contract, and we know we're going to be able to do that year, for years to come."
Yeah, absolutely right. And just remember that most of the facilities we're looking at can only take a, maybe perhaps, maybe 500 to 800 tons a day. So even if we were able to whittle down to 3,000 tons a day of refuse, we would still need a number of these facilities in order to accommodate our needs. So we're not just talking about citing one, we're talking about a number of them.
Yeah, because these facilities aren't likely going to be very large facilities.
Generally not.
Generally not. Possible, but generally not. For example, Sacramento, there's a legislator in Sacramento that's saying, "No more citing of these kinds of facilities over like 2,500 tons or something like that." So there's actually outside forces that could force us to have to actually change our plans, which would cost Angelinos more money.
Correct.
Okay. The reason why I want to ask these questions is because I think it's important, we need to be honest with the people of Los Angeles, that this is a very complicated issue. Just to say no feels good, and a certain part of Los Angeles is like, "Yeah." But the rest of Los Angeles is calling us, saying, "Why are you doing this? I was doing just fine, taking my trash out there. I noticed my bill went up. Why did it go up? I noticed that, you know, you're telling me or warning me that the bill's probably going to go up in the next coming years." Then all of a sudden, we have all Angelinos, unfortunately, engaged way later in the process. And believe me, I have dump sites in, in my district. I have more former and current dump sites in, in my six council districts than anywhere else in the city. That's not a proud thing to say, but it's a fact. So I'm very weary of these alternatives, because very likely, people are going to be coming, knocking on my door and my community's door, saying, "Well, now that we're not going to be dumping it into landfills, we're going to be wanting to do MRFs and transfer stations and all these recycling centers, et cetera, why don't we do it in Sun Valley?" Okay? And the answer is, "No, I don't think so. I don't think so." Maybe if we see all other 14 council districts take on their fair share, then maybe we can talk about that kind of stuff as well. So my, my point is, this is a citywide issue. This is people's trash from San Pedro to Silmar to Brentwood. This is all of our trash.
Correct.
And we need to realize that we all have to, to start taking up our fair share of our own trash.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple more questions, and then I'd like BFI to come up for one more quick question. Recycling, how much of our trash is recycled percentage today?
60%.
60%. And how long will it take us to get to 100%? All the MDUs and all the condos and all the other multiplexes?
That's 60% of the household refuse that we collect. We don't collect the multifamily and others.
I understand. But let's get into that issue, okay?
We are, absolutely, we're working on those.
The people in the city of Los Angeles, when will all those others have the green and the black and the, you know?
Well, we're aggressively working to make sure that within the next two years, we would hope that all the multifamilies, because since we have, don't have control over their collection as the city does.
Why don't we?
We would, we would have to franchise it. We would have to pass laws in order for that to take place.
Okay, let's pass laws, and I want to see a timetable for passing the law. I want every Angelino to have a recycling opportunity so that all of our trash has the blue bin, has the black bin, has the green bin. And I want a timetable from you within the next 90 days that tells me how the whole city will get into a recycling mode. Can I get that in 90 days?
That's, that's no problem. We've been working on that issue.
Well, the, the point is, the clock has stopped. I've been here 20 days, and this has been going on for 20 years, okay? All right. And I don't want to get, get out of here and it not be resolved.
I understand.
All right. The, the second big question for me is, we don't have an alternative, right?
Correct.
So no matter what our political posturing is around this horseshoe, the truth is, we have no place to throw our trash.
Correct. No, no contracted way. We, we would find ways if you elected to direct us to find ways we could.
Next question is, if we find ways, all of our trash collection bills will go up, right? Because all the dollars and figures I've heard here suggest, no matter what it is, we're going to have to pay more.
There's a good possibility we would have to pay more. Correct.
All right. I would also like a plan from you all over the next 90 days on how we can, in the future, I don't care if it's three years from now or five years from now, how we can go forward with alternatives other than Sunshine Canyon as a dump. Okay? So we can vet it all out, and my colleague has it all here now, and I obviously want to know how we, as a governmental body, can address this issue from a fair perspective of options for us to deal with. Okay?
The bureau's been working on this, and we'll have it available for you.
Yeah, well, I want to see something that I can share with my constituents.
No problem.
If I could ask BFI one more question? I really appreciated your comment of saying you could go from the 22nd to August 5th. That showed the desire to move forward. I don't like a gun to my head under any circumstances. Appreciate that very much. What is the chance, if we as a council approved a two-year contract, which means really two years, 11 months, and 10 days, with an option for another three years, and during the next almost three years, we as a city could see if we can come up with plans and options that take us to a new day with the new technology, with the aggressive recycling of all of our aspects, would you accept a, a deal that was two years with a three-year option?
I don't have the authority presently to negotiate a contract on the council floor from my corporation, so.
Could you bring that back on the August 5th deadline to see if we would have some more flexibility? Because what I want to accomplish here is for our city to come up with alternatives in a reasonable timeframe, because we do have to take responsibility for our garbage. We probably have to pay more. You're not at a financial loss, because you already said there are other groups that will fill, which is ironic, it was city property that now in 1999, we provided to create more of a, a landfill area. So the city really has to take responsibility for that. But you'll find other clients, so it won't be a financial issue for you. But is there some flexibility? Could you go back and get that for us?
I'll certainly look into it. I would like to comment, because people have been asking about how long does it take to site some of these facilities. And we have a solid waste facility at an existing landfill, and we have been at this process for 14 years. process for 14 years. So please take that into consideration. And when you say, well, we just need another year, another two years, the reality is, is that to cite such facilities takes a very long time. And we can first, tell you firsthand from experience, how long it takes. So please consider that also.
Yeah, and also I want you to know, I don't consider you the bad guys in this situation here. I think the city, if anybody has some responsibility, it's our responsibility to come up with ways that are more environmentally sensitive and more meet the needs of, of the, the era we live in than before. So it's not against you.
I certainly appreciate that, Councilman, because quite honestly, throughout part of this process, there has been made many comments vilifying our company and we appreciate those comments.
Thank you. But I'd love to see if we can get a two-year with a three-year option. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to acknowledge Councilman Smith. He's taken this by the horns. He's laid down a Renew LA plan. He's giving us a way to look at options. He's setting down a skeleton, if you will, a framework by which we can work with. So I applaud him for doing that. But the real truth is, if we don't vote for expansion, extending this contract, then each one of us should be accountable to define and implement a plan today that takes care of our trash. We each should be accountable for our vote. So that is a very real stark reality as an elected official. And I'm not sure if any one of us is, is ready to do that. But I have these questions I've asked before. I'll have them in writing. I'd like to submit them to you. I'd like to get a response for the record. I'm going to provide my colleagues with a copy of each question and I would hope they would get a response to each of these questions. So I'm going to go, I'm going to lay these questions out. The plan calls, the Renew LA plan calls for allowing conversion technologies by right in M2 and M3 zones, provided there's a community input on design, odor control, landscaping, and possible payments to a community betterment fund. How could we ensure this occurs without, without a discretionary review and conditional use permit for the facilities? Who will conduct outreach to neighborhood councils and the community stakeholders? Again, if you can answer, because it's not your department oversight, which department would be responsible for that? Much of our current waste going to the landfill is organic and/or recyclable. It is good that the Renew LA plan is looking comprehensively at addressing this by improving recycling composting efforts. My time wasn't being held, but I'll go ahead. How does BOs foresee achieving this, improving our curbside recycling, improving the recycling market development zone program, and decreasing litter? Now, as far as I'm concerned, my district is up to 70% apartments. Have 30% which are residential, are one, that can actually take advantage of the curbside. So the largest density, the highest, the most dense neighborhoods don't have benefit of this program. So a lot of debris that we're not recycling. Now, if you were to go down every district, high percentage of each district is not even benefiting from this. So I want to reinforce Councilmember Rosendahl's request. My understanding is from the overall recycling scale, the whole market, we're really only touching 20%.
Is that true?
That's been my understanding.
And the residential side?
No, I'm talking about the city as a whole. Our ability to recycle all of our products, we're only at 20%, given our limitations because of the curbside program and the way we approach this whole issue. I'm not putting it down, I'm just saying that's our capacity at this time.
And the commercial sector and the institutional sector, there's an awful lot of recycling that is taking place by market-driven, a great deal. And so.
Do, do we have an understanding of what the private sector is doing? Do we have a total figure of what we're able to absorb that doesn't go to landfill? Do we have that?
Yes. I mean, you look at, when Rita said 60%, that is of the city waste universe.
The city waste.
That, that is the city universe, Councilman. City waste universe. That is the total waste irrespective of the sector. That's 60%.
Even though we're not recycling with apartments?
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct.
We're just trying to capture more of them.
Now, if you look at residential only, then your statement is correct. That is, that the multifamily sector does not receive the benefit of recycling as it stands right now.
Okay. Okay.
No, we, we have.
We have ways.
A program in the, underway.
We have a program in place at this point.
One more question. I got a few more, but it's a long day, but this is a very important issue. How does the Department of Power envision the conversion technology fitting into their renewable energy portfolio requirements? What amount of energy is lost in the conversion? And how much energy is invested in creating, maintaining the infrastructure and the truck fleet? And shouldn't the truck fleet utilize clean technologies as well?
Well, currently, our truck fleet does. We have, you know, in the valley, we have LNG and we're launching it in the, in the harbor. So we're currently taking advantage of alternative technology with regard, alternative fuels with regard to our fleet.
When I see the trucks and the blue bins for recycling, I see, I don't see electric vehicles, I see diesel vehicles, I hear.
Well, we're not, no, we haven't moved, the industry hasn't moved into electric vehicles, but we certainly have used gas.
No, no, I understand that, but it's not clean technology. The trucks aren't clean technology, at least not what I see in my district.
Yeah, that's correct. In your district, that's correct. Is that we haven't launched, it's only currently in the valley and launching in the harbor. Our plan is to do it citywide.
So you have it in the valley, you have it in the harbor, but you don't have it in the most popular areas?
Correct.
Where the kids are suffering the highest lung cancer incidence, right?
By, by 2010, we should have, Councilman, by 2010.
We're moving, we have a plan to move it citywide. Correct.
Okay. Again, these are reality checks. Put these on the record.
And we'll answer them in writing.
It's great that Councilmember Smith is going there, but we're not ready. We need to be accountable and responsible. If we're not going to expand this program, if we're not going to extend the contract, let's face it, we're going to have to increase fees for our waste.
Correct.
That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Mr. Smith's the next speaker. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me ask BFI to come up just one question, please. Let me just ask, as you've heard all the conversation about this issue, the area of, the city takes the course of not renewing, which gives you an option to go out and sell this space to other people. What is the likelihood if after RFP and other studies, that the city comes back and said, we only have one option and that's the current landfill? Is there an expectation we could get the same contract and cost?
No, at that point, it's basically a whole new contract and we would have to negotiate terms and price based on a whole new entire contract.
So the, the only way to maintain the current contract is to renew it before now the 5th? Is that the date?
At the, the current pricing schedule and terms, they must, must be renewed in order for you to enjoy that rate.
Okay. And, and is the 5th the absolute drop dead date?
For business purposes, I mean, we've already extended this by three weeks and we're granting another two plus weeks. If there is a, a date certain, I would like to hold to that date. If, if somebody says, well, could it be August 8th or 7th or 9th?
So you're saying that the 5th is not a drop dead date if you were given a specific date after that?
I, I would need a, a specific date and then I would then come back to you and so tell you this is the date that we would agree to.
Okay. And the other issue is that under the current contract, if we were to negotiate later, the, then we'd be going by the current standards of the cost of disposal and hauling compared to where we negotiated this, what, five years ago, six years ago?
Okay, I'm not sure.
So we'd have to come up with the current rate of, of cost as opposed to what we negotiated six years ago?
Any, any new contract, if this one isn't extended, would have different terms and different prices in it.
Okay. And that would be based on what's current today on what the cost is?
It depends on market conditions at that point in time. And we talked about the market situation earlier where the supply for landfill airspace is diminishing, is diminishing.
Okay. If, if I understand it correctly, currently, the cost we have now is 20?
Probably $24 per ton.
$24. And if I understand it correctly, that's close to maybe the best price available in this region?
It is, it is the best for, for our particular landfill, the best third-party rate. And I think based on any other rates within the county, I think it's very favorable.
Okay. And that's based on the fact that we bring that kind of volume?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Colleagues, I would just like to say that, and I, I thought when we approved Mr. Smith's plan, that we're on the right track of looking for the future. But my concern is that I don't think we can undo what happened years ago that created the, the landfill. And in my judgment, we have to move along with Mr. Smith's plan, but we cannot take the safety net out of the current existence and put the city in financial liability. And I agree with Mrs. Grue that we should challenge everyone, but I don't think we can challenge without that safety net. And I don't think we can realistically continue to refer to ourselves as environmentalists if we're only looking to move the trash to another county's location to dump it. And so I think in looking at this, I would hope that after all of this conversation and the things we've asked you to come back with, I would ask that, it appears today we've challenged a lot of people that maybe with these new reports and if we can, Mr. Chair, I would move that we would continue this to the 5th. When we have, I know Mr. Garcetti's not here, he asked to be a part of this discussion. I think Mrs. Han would be back, who certainly has expressed an interest. If we could move that to the 5th and where these reports would be forthcoming, I think we can continue, plus stay within the guidelines of BFI.
Okay. So colleagues, now how on the desk, motion to continue, it has been seconded to August 5th. We still have on the queue, Mr. Smith waiting to speak for a second time, Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Rosendahl. Do we wish to continue discussion or should we proceed with a vote on continuance or should we continue without any objection? Is there an objection to continuing to August 5th?
Yes, sir, I do object.
Okay. Mr. Smith, you have a report.
Well, I have the floor. I was going to move the previous question, because I'd like to take a vote on this today. I think it's time for just to decide. We've put this off for weeks and weeks, but really, we've been putting off for 20 years. This isn't a council that just put it off for a few weeks to negotiate. This is a council that's been forced to make a decision. So let's make a decision and just go forward. I want to commend first of all Rita and Enrique for the way they've handled themselves today. I think you've done yourself a great deal of credit today. I think the important thing is that we have to challenge you to do better as a department. We have to challenge you to come up with answers. How long are we going to continue to play this game of chicken? How long are we going to continue to play this game of continue and delay? It is time to just vote. Vote your conscience, vote your gut. I'm going to ask you to vote no on the continuance and ask the entire measure, measure be brought to the floor and voted on today. It is time the city of LA just makes up its mind and does the right thing. Does the right thing. And the right thing is, get out of Sunshine because we don't belong there. There's a lot of issues I can answer today. Let me talk very briefly about the money. We talked about the 17 million, which Mr. Weiss brought up. It's really not 17 million. Today, according to your own internal reports, how much of our black can trash is pretensible that can go into that green bin?
Close to 30%.
Your own report said 40 to 60.
Well, you know, organics that could be easily compostable could, and, and, you know, even in that area, Councilman, you know, we, we would have to look at the feasibility of collecting it in the green can and, you know, a, a decision.
You're backtracking, Enrique. Your own report's at 40 to 60%.
The waste characterization, you mean?
Yes.
Of, of organic in a general.
That's in there. Right. So 40 to 60% right now.
It, it's organic.
Is organic. And can be put into the green bins. That, if you take that 40, 60%, let's just say 40%, throw in the 10% of the other stuff you just mentioned that's still recyclable, that we're not pulling out. You're up over 50%. So Mr. Weiss's 17 million becomes eight and a half million real fast. We got 3 million in the budget already this year. It's under 5 million bucks all of a sudden. Now, put that in context of the SEC charge, that's less than a dollar, isn't it, on SEC? Less than $1 that we haven't covered yet in the old budget. Less than a buck. Less than one Starbucks, folks, solves this problem. Okay? So if we really go out and do things and be a creative and really fight and go out and really try hard, there's options out there that we have not explored, that we know are out there, there's options out there that could take effect, that could happen within a year, but we haven't really tried. Ladies and gentlemen, Council, let's just tell our department, let's go try. Ms. Perry and I are willing, if we need to, to start a process of every week having a special meeting of our joint committees to delve through this. Open the doors up to City Hall and tell the people of this state, come to us, we want your ideas, we want to work with you, we want to do this because we want out of Sunshine Canyon. I know they're going to come charging through those doors. So I ask you today, vote no on the continuance. Let's call the mayor and vote on it today.
Mr. Labange.
I have to say to vote yes on the continuance, because it's a citywide issue, Mr. Smith, and members are not here and there will be all members who are on council will be here on that date. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
There are people who have requested to be excused that day. There are people currently working to rearrange their schedules to be here, so it's a question mark at this point.
As a courtesy, I support Mr. Parks in continuance.
Mr. Cardenas?
Well, I wasn't going to speak to the matter of the continuance. I was on the queue to speak, so, okay, then I'll, I'll speak. One of the things that I think it's important, and, and I agree, Mr. Smith, that our staff has been doing a good job today, but unfortunately, I think that what we do, and I don't mean us here, but I think what elected officials do in general, is they're constantly asking the experts, our staff, the people that have expertise in these areas, to please tell us what we want to hear. Please tell us we can actually do something different. Please tell us that we can tell the people of Granada Hills and North Ridge that we're no longer going to participate in this particular landfill, but please don't tell us it's going to cost us any more money. Please don't tell us we're going to have to wait longer to figure out what to do with it. Please tell us that everything's going to be just fine, so I can go back to whatever it is that I'm doing. The reason why I'm saying that is because, sure, I want to vote for this today, Mr. Smith. I'm torn, because I also want to give my colleagues who are members of this council an opportunity to have their vote heard as well, as a courtesy to them, to say, whether they vote yea or nay, it's, you know, not the reason why I'd like them to vote on it. I'd like them to vote on it because they deserve to be participating. But at the same time, I want to respect the fact that this is your backyard, Greg Smith. And the fact of the matter is, you're the number one person on the hot seat, even though, Tom, this is a citywide issue. But you're the one that the people are going to tar and feather if in fact, they don't get what they want. They're not going to tar and feather me, or Jack, or, or Tom, or the rest of us. They're going to tar and feather you, because you're the guy that represents Granada Hills and North Ridge. But the problem is, we're sitting here with experts trying to educate. I think this is at least my purpose. Today, my purpose is to educate Angelinos on the policy, to get Angelinos to start appreciating the fact, this is our trash. It's not the city of Los Angeles trash. It's the trash of the person who lives on Fillmore Street in Pacoima. It's the trash of the person who lives on Sunset in Brentwood. It's everybody's trash. The fundamental problem is that it becomes this big monolith of the department's problem. And then it becomes a problem of the council member's problem, and then it becomes the problem of the new mayor. But what's sad is, people aren't willing to be honest with ourselves and say, you know what? The reason why we have this big gross tonnage problem is because this city fumbled and failed to address it appropriately for decades. What I'd like to see us do is be honest with ourselves and be constructive and force ourselves to have those weekly meetings and actually get to the point where we have real places to send our trash. Our trash. Not Tony Cardenas' trash. My trash are pounds a week, me and my family. We're talking about thousands of tons a day, 6,000 tons a day of trash. And this Sunshine Canyon, unfortunately or fortunately, is part of today's solution. So I would love to have a vote today. I'm torn, because I would love to have my other colleagues who aren't here get themselves here and two more colleagues here and vote as well. Whether it passes or not, that's a courtesy that I'd like to afford my colleagues. But because it's Greg Smith's district, I'll vote that we have the vote today. I'll vote that we not postpone the vote. But what I'd like to see happen is that we bring it to this floor again and again and again until we actually provide solutions.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I know we belabor this point to a long, long discussion. And I told my colleague, I represent the south part of the valley, you represent the north part of the valley, that I would support you in this endeavor. What I look at is a solution. And I know that Councilmember Smith and his staff spent an incredible amount of time reviewing this, knowing the facts, knowing the figures, more than anyone in this council. I support him in his goal, and I am not for keeping that particular facility open. I also realize that the more time, and I've learned this in the experience here, the more time we have to discuss and debate, we come up with a solution. The folks from BFI said they'll give us till August 5th. There's a deadline this Friday. They'll give us that time to sit down. We've had time to sit down. The city attorneys had time to review and discuss. I honestly, in my heart, don't see a problem with continuing it to have more discussion and maybe we can come up with a solution. I know that we want to get a vote, but we have two council members missing, and we have two seats that are vacant. And as stated, it is a citywide issue. It's not just the valley that takes the trash for the valley, it's the valley that takes the trash for the whole city. And each and every one of us, each and every one of us has an obligation to our constituents. I made a commitment in 2001 that I would support the closing of that particular facility. Our former mayor made that same commitment. We're now at that threshold. What do we do? We still have a year to deal with it. If we take the vote today, it's not going to pass. If we take the vote on August 5th, I don't know if it's going to pass or fail. I know my position is I'm not supporting the continuation of the operations at the landfill, but I am supporting the continuing discussion and hopefully a solution. And that's what I've learned, is that the discussion oftentimes brings about a solution. I learned information today I didn't know before today. And I'm sure as this discussion continues, we're all going to learn more about the opportunities. I know that the department needs to reach out and bring in more representatives, more technology, more advancement of what we're going to do for the future. We're talking down the road where we're all going to be gone from this council, and there's still going to be trash collected, and there's still going to be the disposition of that trash with the increased population that we have. We need to come up with a solution. If we vote today, I would tell you it's not going to pass. Then we cut off negotiations, we cut off talk, where are we going to end up with that? Versus continuing to discuss. And we've done this on many, many issues. As we continue to discuss, we come up with a solution. So I support my colleague, Councilmember Smith. I also support coming up with a solution, and I honestly don't know what the problem is if we do continue it till August 5th and have more discussion, have more input, and hopefully come up with a solution we can all agree to, because we're split on this. And when we're split on this, it's not beneficial to any of us. And I know that from Councilmember Reyes' district where the trash is picked up, my district where the trash picked up, they got deposited someplace. And again, I don't want to end up like New York with a barge floating out there. Where are we going to deposit it? I think the communication should continue. The discussion can continue, and that's how we're going to come up with a solution to this matter. And if they give us the time till August 5th, we take the time and we see what we can deal with to come up with a solution. So I will support the motion for the continuance, also support the motion that we come up with a solution to this and have a drop dead date and take the vote at that time. But I still think there's maybe some wiggle room, as we saw yesterday, there was wiggle room, and that we're here today.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. President, garbage stinks. We know that. But I don't want to shoot myself in the foot. And I also respect my seatmate right next to me here and his issues about Sunshine Canyon. Don't kid ourselves, we're not going to close Sunshine Canyon in the next minute, or five years, or even 20 years. It has a right now with a piece of land that the city of LA gave in 1999 to continue to use it as a refuge dump. If we don't dump our stuff there, other cities will, the dump will continue. Politically, we can say we want to close, but in the real world that we live in, trash will go there, be it our trash or somebody else's trash. My big question to the city, and I still haven't gotten a straight answer. There are 750,000 households or so, 4 million of us. How many of the 4 million of us are in a recycling mode today?
750,000.
Out of 4 million?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. 750,000 households.
Okay.
Okay? 4 million population, so it's 750,000 households, mostly single family, 520,000 single family, 230,000 multifamily.
So how many other multifamilies are not in the recycling program?
600,000.
Okay. And so we're looking at a population of 600,000 households that are not part of the program?
Correct.
If we had that program going now, that would lessen the amount of solid trash that would go to Sunshine Canyon, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I want a timetable of how we're going to make it a universe of the city of Los Angeles. I don't care if it's private contractors or whatever, I want to see those recyclable bins everywhere, so recycling happens immediately. Secondly, I want to see your long-range plans for alternatives for us. I agree with my colleague, Mr. Parks, we need a safety net. We don't have a safety net now. As much as we want to say we want to throw our trash somewhere else, we don't have an answer to that now. We should continue the item until all of us colleagues get a chance to vet this against one more time, and then we can vote, Mr. President, yes or no. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
I remember with John Farrar and Tom Bradley at Garden Avenue and Tyburn Street in Atwater Village, we put the first yellow bins out. First yellow bins out, now we got the blue cans. And it's not just Sunshine Canyon, but other parts of the city take a load of trucks for our recyclables. I think we go to 25th and Alameda, is that correct? Where we take the recyclable, the blue bin, and I know a lot of green waste goes into parts of Griffin Park and Lopez Canyon still takes green waste. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You know, so it's shared out on this whole issue here. I just got to ask a question. If our intent is not to ever dump there, okay, if that is our intent, then let's say we don't ever dump there, but yet we then contract with Allied, I don't know if there's a company named Allied, so the disclaimer.
That's BFI.
Is that Allied?
Yeah, it's a parent company of BFI.
All right, let's say there's Labange hauling. I'll just start with that. Okay? So Labange hauling then sees that the city needs someone to haul their trash. What prevents Labange hauling to say, I'll take your trash, Mr. and Mrs. Los Angeles, but I'll go and I'll pay X of dollars to go dump at Sunshine, and I'm out of the loop? Can that still happen? I mean, could that conceivably happen?
I think if the intent is to not bring it there, our contractual arrangements will prohibit that scenario.
But what if it's a bid, and you put a bid out to say that you do that? And I see someone from days past integrated. You should be at the table, Lupa. You did hard work years ago. You were there in the original stages of working with the apartment houses and all that other, other non-Los Angeles collection. And we still have a position like that, right? And an advocate like that, right? Which is very important to have for us. But we would have to probably say, we will not dump, you know, then it just means, then all that means is the cost is higher to the people who we serve, because obviously we say we can't dump someplace. You can't do that, right?
I think we're only talking about city-collected waste.
City-collected waste from city trash trucks.
Yes.
Right. They could do that. Anyway, I support a continuance, and I thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
I just want to keep this short. Folks, today, I have dump sites and dead ends, sidewalks, near parks. We pick up over 55 tons of debris because we now have a route in which we know people will dump. Now, the areas that suffer the most are the folks and the neighborhoods who have the least amount of protection. And there are landscapers out there, there are companies out there, there are folks who manage apartments who choose not to go to the dump, and they're dumping in our streets anyway. So these are very real problems, day-to-day life. If we don't have a way to deal with it today in a very real way, and if we're not ready to tell our constituents that we're going to have to raise a fee, we're in real trouble. So again, let's postpone it, let's get our colleagues in here and call for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Colleagues, the first motion before us for a vote is the continuance. So a yes vote allows a matter to be continued to August 5th, and no vote doesn't. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on continuing the item. Colleagues, the roll is open. All members have an opportunity to vote. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, three noes.
Okay, that motion carries. We'll see you back on August 5th. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 17 is being held on the desk, and that was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, item 17?
Yes, just one question for the city staff, please.
And are they here now? They weren't here earlier. Here we go. Come forward, come forward.
No, no.
Item 17.
Hi. Just state your name, please.
Alan Willis, Department of Transportation.
Alan, as you know, in the hearing we had last time on this, we moved it forward, and this will be pretty much moved forward. Will you develop for us alternatives? And have you looked into the county parking facilities as well as the city facilities? Are there options if we put this permit parking in place from the hours of 2:00 to 6:00 in the morning for these cars and other vehicles to find an alternative location? Will you get that to us in what timeframe?
We will be able to get that to you probably by the end of the month. I already have two significant pieces of information. The first is that, in fact, we do have a County Coastal Commission permit to allow overnight parking in our lots, but it's right now based on a monthly permit. And so I've got to meet with the staff to find out whether we can structure a nightly fee. The second thing is also very important, and that's that in the municipal code, section 85.02, makes it illegal to live in a vehicle on any city street, on any city parking lot, or in any county and beaches and harbors parking lot. And so the enforcement that currently takes place against people living in their vehicles on city streets in Venice, we would expect to continue, even if they chose to park their vehicles on the off-street lots between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM. So in other words, all they'll be allowed to do is park their vehicle there, they have to leave it. They cannot inhabit that vehicle on our parking lot between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM.
Is this a city law?
This is a city law that's been on the book for a number of years.
Can we revisit that law and take it through the proper committees and give us a better understanding of that law, and possibly if we think we can modify? Because right now, you've told me there really is no alternative. They'll become criminals, we'll put them into the criminal justice system for not, you know, being able to go anywhere.
We're doing that today. We are already enforcing that law. I checked with the neighborhood prosecutor in Venice, and we're already enforcing that law on the city streets in Venice. And we would enforce it on the city parking lots, too.
So in other words, right now, we put them in the county jail, city jail?
I'm not sure exactly what the results of the prosecution are, but we are enforcing that ordinance, and it is against the law throughout the city of Los Angeles to inhabit a vehicle on a city street or a city parking lot.
Could you get me the statistics of how many people we've been arresting and what regularity and what happens to them, so I can understand that law better?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other members wishing to speak on item 17? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Wednesday, August 3rd for personal business. A motion is required.
Mr. Weiss moves. Mr. Parks is excused.
And Council President Padilla requests to be excused August 9th and 10th for personal business. A motion is required.
Ms. Grue moves. Those excuses are granted.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. If there's nothing further, colleagues, and in conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Sergeants, please clear the chambers. Welcome back into open session. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
First item before council is item number 70, and that's approval of $200,000 for outside counsel for Adelphia bankruptcy.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Next item.
Next item is item 71, and that is settlement LAUSD versus Valley Plaza Improvement, and that's authorizing the city attorney to enter into and execute an agreement, and also to execute on behalf of the city disclaimers.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please.
Next item is item 72, and that's also a settlement for fee credit, fee credits of development agreement, and that's for 750,000 in fee credits, and also imposing a time limit of three years.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, next item.
Next item is item 73, and that settlement in the case of Deborah Hartswick versus city of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $425,000.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. Fourth with as well. Next item.
Next item is a settlement. It's item number 74, in the case of Ronald Hicks versus city of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $310,000.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. Fourth with.
And the last item is item 75. That's Omega Chemical Superfund Site, and that's in the amount of 400, excuse me, $48,084.75.
Okay, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Fourth with. Next item.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Great. Colleagues, that's the end of our agenda today. Do we have any announcements? Announcements, Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three announcements in the 8th district. First of all, there will be a major community meeting Saturday, July 23rd at the Charles Drew Middle School, Room 7, at 8511 Compton Avenue, between 10:00 and 12:00. The personnel from LA Unified School District will be there to discuss the newly proposed $3.8 billion bond that they're moving forward on. And so for all community residents interested, we also would like to announce the ongoing Lemur Park Farmers Market, open every Sunday, 10:00 AM, excuse me, to 2:00 PM, at the Vision Theater parking lot, excuse me, Division Theater parking lot at 43rd and Degnan. And then finally, also Saturday, the July 23rd at 11:00 AM, the community, along with the membership of the Christian Crenshaw Center, will be holding a community event at West 79th and South Vermont, in which that intersection will be named in honor of Dr. Fred Price and be labeled as Dr. Frederick Casey Price Square, unveiling is June 23rd, 11:00 AM.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Other announcements? Mr. Reyes.
This is more housekeeping. At 2:15, we'll have Plumb Committee, so we can regroup at that time.
Okay. Other announcements? Other announcements, colleagues? If not, do we have adjourning motions today? Please rise for adjourning motions. Adjourning motions. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Melanie Newkirk Harris, born in Alabama in 1917, passed away Monday, July 11th. She served on the building committee for the Bloomfield Town Hall and was a member of numerous organizations, including the Women's League Daycare Center, the Sigma Phi Lambda Sorority, former illustrious commanderess, daughter of the ISIS of the Court of 137 in Hartford, Connecticut, life member of NAACP. She is the mother of Melanie Harris, who is, Newkirk, who is an employee of the city of Los Angeles, LA Housing Department. She leads her son Roger and then seven grandchildren.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask the council to adjourn in memory of Granada Hills resident Nettie Mertens. Ms. Mertens is a florist in Granada Hills who loved nature, hiking and painting. She's survived by her husband, Jan, children Chuck, Ann, and Peter. May Nettie Mertens rest in peace.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.